Thank you, everyone. Welcome this evening to our city council meeting. We had just convened in a closed session to discuss matters related to the collective bargaining negotiations, which have been suspended with the two unions that we have in the city because of the health crisis. And hopefully those negotiations will resume soon. Before we start our meeting this evening, I'd like us to open our meeting with a moment of silence for us to take a moment to remember and to reflect on the lives of Breonna Taylor, Aubrey, George Floyd, Sinan Baran, and all those who have been taken from us due to violence by police departments around the country. And this is a time we want to come together. There's a lot of pain and anger in our communities, and especially by those most affected. So I'd like to take a moment to open our meeting now with a moment of silence. Thank you. And I do want to actually lift up Breonna Taylor. Her birthday would have been this Friday. She would have turned 27 years old. And for people who want to get more involved, there are efforts to have a birthday for Breonna. And other things that you can look at on social media. So I just wanted to particularly lift that up. In addition, I know the city manager has in her comments, and people can find the links to a number of things that have taken place in the city. On Monday evening with Tacoma Radio, there was a program that our council member Talisha Cersey and council member Jared Smith were on, and a number of other community activists and residents spoke about the current events in Tacoma Park and what this all means. And I just want to say thank you very much to my colleagues for doing that. It was an incredibly moving evening, and I was glad everyone could participate. And so the recording of that is available on Facebook, and I believe may also be available on the city website. But we can check. The links will be in the city manager's comments. In addition, I ask that folks look at the blog that Councilwoman Cersey also wrote for all of us and this weekend, as well as the chief statement regarding the killing of George Floyd. And so with that, we'll now begin our meeting. The first two things we have on the agenda are two proclamations. The first is Gun Violence Awareness Day. And I'll read this aloud. Whereas every day, more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence, and on average, there are more than 13,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas Maryland has 682 gun deaths every year with a rate of 11.3 deaths per 100,000 people. Maryland has the 35th highest rate of gun deaths in the US. And whereas gun homicides predominantly occur in cities with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities. And whereas cities across the nation, including in the city of Tacoma Park, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizen goes hands in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas the pandemic-facing America has drastically impacted communities and individuals sheltering in place, which may result in situations where access to firearms results in increased risk to intimate partner violence, gun deaths, suicide by gun, and unintentional shootings. And whereas in January 2013, Hyja Pendleton, a teenager who marched in the presidential inaugural parade, was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, and should now be celebrating her 23rd birthday. And whereas to help honor Hyja and the more than 100 Americans whose lives are cut short every day, and the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 5, 2020, the first Friday in June, as the sixth National Gun Violence Day Awareness. Whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hyja's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is the color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join the campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 5, the first Friday in June in 2020, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas wearing orange on June 5, 2020, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and on the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownerships to help keep children safe. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, declare the first Friday in June, June 5, 2020, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all of you to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value of human lives. The next is proclamation for Immigrant Heritage Month, which is in June. Whereas as a nation of immigrants in the United States of America has benefited from the culture, ideas, skills, and abilities of those who've come here to work, learn, and to find freedom and shelter. And whereas in Tacoma Park, we have many first and second-generation immigrants as our neighbors. And whereas the city has a long history of welcoming immigrants and working to build a caring, inclusive, and strong community which celebrates its diversity. And whereas in recent years, as more immigrants fear deportation and others may be viewed with mistrust, it is more important than ever to maintain our Tacoma Park values. Now therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, on behalf of the council, residents, and staff proclaim June as Immigrant Heritage Month in Tacoma Park and encourage all to come together and recommit ourselves to being an inclusive, welcoming community that upholds the rights of all people to live with dignity and respect. Thank you. Those are our two proclamations for this evening. Next, we will go to public comments on voting items. Our first two voting items, I do not believe we had any public comments on them. They are the second reading ordinances for traffic calming on Wildwood Drive. Therefore, we'll move then to our third voting item, which is a resolution supporting small businesses and advancing public health by allowing the use of public and private space for outdoor seating, sales, and customer pickup. The first person I have on the list to speak this evening is Mr. Bruce Moyer.
Are you there?
Yep, go ahead.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Kate. Good evening, council members. I'm Bruce Moyer at 6907 West Moreland Avenue. I serve as the president of the Western Moreland Area Community Organization, or WACO. Our association represents several hundred residents in the neighborhood on the east side or lower side of Old Town. These comments this evening are only my own personal views and are not officially those of the WACO Association. Last night, our neighbors, for the first time, discussed the proposed resolution under consideration this evening with Mayor Stewart, Councilperson Costuk, OTBA Executive Director Laura Barclay, and city staff. It was a very helpful, very preliminary discussion, but it revealed that there are a lot of details to work out in a dynamic environment on a proposal like this. We thank them for their participation, and I know all neighbors look forward to continue discussion to work out a plan. Two themes emerged from that discussion. First, there is clearly broad support among all neighbors for helping our Old Town businesses in these extraordinary times. And second, there are clear problems with the city OTBA plan to close Laurel Avenue because of its potential impact on neighborhood traffic, on parking, and public safety. Every neighbor joins me in supporting our Old Town businesses, and we will continue to support them. We will continue to buy their versatile goods, their delicious food. They will continue to receive our patronage because they provide important benefits to our neighbor, to neighborhood, to all neighbors across the city and throughout Tacoma Park and beyond. However, the repurposing of public space, space, and especially roadways for the commercial benefit of any business should never disfavor the quality of life in our surrounding neighborhoods. Let's be clear. This is the same Laurel Avenue closure plan that first emerged last fall before the pandemic hit us. Let's recall that the city withdrew that plan after our neighborhood raised the same serious questions and concerns that go into the details that I'm sure other neighbors will raise tonight. Despite the emergency state of the pandemic, we ask whether we should take a little more time to work out the underlying plan that this resolution would authorize. There are too many issues of concern to identify tonight, but let me identify some of the major ones. First of all, the broad-
Moyer, that's your time. That's three minutes.
Is that it? Okay.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we have Mr. Jeffrey Hopkins.
Hi. Thanks. Hope everybody can hear me. My name is Jeff Hopkins, and my wife and I live on the corner of Walnut and Eastern Avenue. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak toward the council. I think that Tacoma Park can show strong leadership in responsibly opening up our city. Further, I think we can move quickly here and encourage the city council to approve the resolution as introduced to expand outdoor seating on Laurel Ave, Anne Street, and Holton Lane. I'm not recommending approval because it is perfect as written. It's not perfect, and nothing is. But because it's a good resolution, and we need to be proactively doing good things as a community that brings us closer together. Twelve weeks of economic inaction have been slowly strangling the downtown area that gives us no end of civic pride. Tacoma Park has a tremendous asset in the business side of the street on Laurel Avenue, and we should use it for a higher purpose than hosting automobile traffic, at least temporarily. This higher purpose and better use has three qualities that make passing the resolution a straightforward choice. First, we are already closing off all of Laurel Avenue every Sunday morning for the farmer's market. Second, we know what happens when we do this. All of the good things that happen in that space and the trade-offs we face when traffic has to find somewhere else to go. Third, the proposals, detractors, mention the cut-through traffic, which will in turn increase the noise level. But these impacts will be marginal, not drastic, I believe. And I trust the city staff to address any additional issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mr. Roger Schlegel.
Good evening. I'm Roger Schlegel, 6512 Allegheny Avenue, Ward 3. I would like to share a few brief thoughts on two matters of concern. Very briefly, I wanted to comment that I think it is time to end the emergency powers arrangement for the city manager, as it is clear that the council is able to confer and exercise its normal oversight functions. Secondly, in consideration of the resolution regarding outdoor dining areas, I have these five comments to make, and I'm not going to be commenting on the complexities of parking and pedestrian movement, but I hope that others will. First, in principle, I do agree that it makes sense, from an economic standpoint, to convert some outdoor space for temporary use by businesses during Phase 1 of reopening. Second, I'm concerned that the restaurants along Laurel Avenue seem to be getting favorable treatment with this emergency resolution. Like many other restaurants elsewhere in town, including areas developed more recently, later in the 20th century, these businesses are situated in properties that have off-street parking right behind them. So I'm wondering why the city should be favoring these restaurants in particular, and I think that further justification of this action is needed. Third, I believe that along that commercial block of Laurel Avenue, the post office is the business that potentially needs the most support, potentially to move some of its operations outside. This is because going to a restaurant is a matter of choice. But for many residents, even those vulnerable to COVID-19, going to the post office can sometimes be a necessity. On a recent visit there, I was alarmed to spend so many minutes indoors in air that had probably been occupied by members of the public on a continuous basis for hours. And I was especially concerned for other residents in the space, and even more concerned for the postal service employees, whom we love so much. So before any actions taken to meet the needs of businesses, we should be inquiring as to whether the city could help the post office operate in a safer way for the public and for its dedicated staff. Fourth, reopening is meant to meet the needs of all kinds of businesses, not just restaurants and bars. So I am concerned that this resolution appears to give restaurants first dibs on the public space that may be available. I have a neighbor who operates a retail business along that same stretch. How will that business's needs be accommodated? Whatever you do, it should not favor one type of business over another just because they got into the space first. And last, I believe the public space should remain for the public. For people without the means to spend money in a restaurant, are they being shut out of this public space in an equitable way? This resolution must be clear whether spaces will be reserved for specific restaurants or whether a streetery area will be created that could be used by anyone, regardless of where they purchase their food or drink. I favor the idea of transforming car-centric spaces into spaces for public gathering and alternate modes of transportation, to the extent that it's possible. But I do not favor the creation of an enclave for well-to-do consumers only. Thank you for considering this action, and I hope that you will move carefully to fine-tune any resolution that you may decide to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schlegel. Great. Next, we have Mr. Bob Patton. Mr. Patton with us. Should we move on to Mr. Youvner? Oh, there is Mr. Patton. Okay.
I just, this doesn't have very good controls in Zoom. I'm used to Teams. Can you hear me now, finally?
We can see you. You're good to go.
Okay, thank you for letting me address the council, Kate. And I live at 7005 West Moreland, and I was at the presentation that Bruce Moyer spoke about, which was very helpful. I also had a follow-up meeting today with Laura Barclay with the Business Association. I recognize that we need to move very fast, and I am kind of torn in that I don't really want to slow this process down. But I do have some concerns. I believe it would be much wiser to start instead of having it be 24/7, having that lane closed. I suggest something like closing it 24 hours a day, beginning Wednesday afternoon. I was talking with Laura, and they have to break down the closure for the businesses in order to allow the farmer's market to set up on Sunday morning. And the farmer's market wants to move back to that location this weekend. So if they're going to be setting things up and then closing down for the farmer's market, my suggestion is that after the farmer's market is closed, that only the parking areas be used for the added business space for the rest of Sunday, as well as Monday, Tuesday, and part of Wednesday. This would create a pilot program in which we have that street open normally for a few days a week, and we have it totally closed to support the businesses. I'd like to hear what business owners feel about that arrangement. My experience is that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday is much better for that type of business than the earlier days in the week. And some businesses in town don't even open on Mondays, some restaurants. I believe that we need to have a more robust review of this. I think we should get it going right away. But I think there should be a review period that involves some designated citizens to join with the businesspeople, city staff, and evaluate this, I'm suggesting, in late August. In my written comments, I'm not going to go through all of those, but I give the reasons for why I think it would be good to have an evaluation at that time. It gives the restaurants and the public enough time to experiment with a change. But we have a tremendous number of unknowns that would speak to the relevance of continuing it through the fall. And maybe it should be continued through the fall at an even more intense closure. So I'm totally open to whether it's, when we reevaluate, whether it's more-
Your timer's up. Sorry, your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Next, we have Paul Youvner.
I don't see me, Kate. Am I on?
I can hear you, Paul, but I can't see.
I can hear me, and I can hear you, but I guess I'm not much to look at anyway. I talked to Jesse, and I was supposed to be registered to speak on two different issues. I don't know which one you want me to do first.
You know what? If you want, I can give you six minutes, and you can just do both right now.
It won't even take that long, Kate.
Okay, then just do both right now. There, we can see you now.
All right. Just to follow up with the gentleman. Good evening, Paul Youvner, 7405 Carroll, down by the junction. And I want to say that the latest proposal by the Old Town Business Association, OTBA, and city staff is merely a do-over of a previously denied proposal. To sneak it in just before the council meeting further enhances the idea that city staff are not considering the needs of city residents. We already fund OTBA and have made recent grants to aid local businesses during the pandemic. Now the businesses want to be given public property for free in order to make a profit. This is discriminatory use of public property. What about other residents who want to use this property, this public space, but can't afford the $5 cup of coffee or a $40 lunch? In addition, six months is far too long. A staged period would be the proper thing to do. But more importantly, there's also other costs associated with it. To post signs, mark the streets and the sidewalks for social distancing, reroute the traffic, et cetera, et cetera. Bruce Moyer said it much better than I, but the council should again deny this motion until there has been sufficient time, of at least one month, to solicit resident feedback and discuss this issue in greater detail. That's one, Kate. Do you want me to start the next one?
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
All right, I'm sorry. I just want to follow the protocol. Okay, same person, unhidden. Tonight, in addition, the council will discuss the Emergency Powers Act of the city manager and the fluctuating state of the flyer ban. I believe the two are informative, mutually informative. I've previously commented on both issues before the council, unfortunately to no avail. Last year, a public notice to discuss the city budget at a public meeting open to all residents was removed by paid city staff at the direction of the city manager. To me, this was a political act because city employees left other leaflets that were commercial or lost dog notices in place on the very same poles. These actions were an abuse of power, an attempt to stifle free speech. This happened before the Emergency Powers Act even, before that was enacted. It also set a precedent for silencing community discussion. Witness now the current removal, Monday night, of Black Lives Matter leaflets from city lampposts by a member of the Tacoma Park Police Force. This officer stripped signs, obviously posted, as an effort to increase awareness- This officer stripped signs, obviously posted as an effort to increase awareness and build public discourse around the other pandemic ravaging our community, racism. This exemplifies the attitude that residents are inferior and subservient instead of the purported mission to protect and serve. To all appearances, the city of Tacoma Park is actively undermining the residents' rights to free speech and community discussion. This is especially egregious now that the city's foremost concern should be to face the scourge of racism that, yes, in this city too, as well as across the country. In pulling down Black Lives Matter leaflets, if pulling down Black Lives Matter leaflets are the type of actions the city manager sanctions under the Emergency Powers Act, all the more reason to rescind it. If this is not a sanctioned action, then the city police force is out of control and apparently doesn't have enough to do. They should not be spending their beat time pulling down leaflets. Our police department should be working for the residents, not against them, and certainly not during this time of national crisis. I request that the city council remove the Emergency Powers Act and lift the flyer ban for non-commercial community notices. And I thank you for your time and attention.
Great, thank you, Mr. Yvner. Next, we have Catherine Desmond. Speaking on, yeah, the voting item on the residence
Yeah. I am, and I am, sorry, I didn't have the video running. Sorry.
That's okay, we can hear you.
They're with me. Okay, and my mic is on, I guess. All right. I'm Catherine Desmond, I live at 238 Park Avenue, and I just want to make a brief comment about one part of the sidewalk and street proposal. I support the public health goals of ensuring that shoppers and diners maintain an effective social distance, and I also support the city's desire to help out struggling businesses. But I'm very troubled by the turnover of public space to private enterprise, in short, increasing businesses' square footage at the public's expense unless those public spaces are open to all, regardless of whether a person makes a purchase. This is an equity issue that has been raised in the many comments lodged on the Tacoma Junction proposal with its paucity of public space. I think that if spaces to be made available for restaurant dining, I'd like to see picnic tables or benches on the median strip or on the sidewalk for picnickers or carryout service or just for visiting. I'm also wondering if the city has or could help to create outdoor spaces for residents of multifamily buildings, which do not have readily accessible outdoor spaces for visiting, relaxing, or eating alfresco. I also strongly support the trial period, but I think six months is too long. I think it should be evaluated after three months. So, thank you very much. Please consider my comments.
Great, thank you, Ms. Desmond. Concludes the comments on the voting items. We will now move on to public comments on other items, and Mr. Navari is our first person up.
Can you hear me?
Yes, and I think, Catherine, are you going to share your screen?
Well, let me just start by saying, I wanted to thank Jarrett and Talisha for the very powerful comments they made on the radio show. It was powerful and elegant, and I feel proud that we have council members that can step up in this time. Secondly, I want to say that with the country in crisis, trust in our government institutions right now is more critical than ever. So that's why I'm meeting again with you guys and belaboring this point. So yes, Jesse, if you could put up my document. So I've been talking to you guys about the stormwater fee. I've sent 35 different emails, I've spent 10 hours on this, I have had three days of testimony, I talked about the $126,000 claim that the city manager made, and I provided you guys the documentation, I provided you the spreadsheets, I read all the documents. It was inaccurate, that is just a fact. And it would have been so simple to just say, yes, we misspoke, it was inaccurate, and we would have been done with that. But I received this email saying that it was accurate, and I called BS on that, and I said, look, if anyone can show me any permutation and combination of any numbers that add up to $126,000, I'm going to donate $1,000 to any needy family in Tacoma Park of your choosing. And I haven't heard back from you. So I'm simply asking for a retractment of the statement that was factually incorrect and false, so that we can have more faith in our city institutions. That's it. And I want to see a formal retractment of those inaccurate statements and not someone insisting that something was right when there's no possible way it was right. And I don't know what to say, I can't believe I'm even having this conversation. And I'd appreciate, Kate, you having some leadership on this matter and asking the city manager to retract the false statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Navari. Next, I lost my list here. Next, we have Sue Miller.
Okay, I have to start my video. All right. Sue Miller, Word Three. First, I want to thank you for lifting the flyer ban yesterday for Black Lives Matter. It was the right thing to do, and I look forward to the community discussion of how our future signposting ordinance, which I know you're still going to be working on, can represent our values in this same way on a permanent basis. I do have to tell you that there is a lack of community confidence in the idea that they were pulled down that night because of language that did actually incite violence, or whether it was only language that was perceived that way. So I think it's essential to release the body cam footage, as the police chief noted he should be able to do. That's the first topic. I have three topics today. Second, I just want to second many of the comments of Roger and Catherine on the use of public space, especially in terms of getting input from all businesses and residents and maintaining inclusive public use, such as picnic tables for all. But mainly tonight, I want to address the city manager's emergency powers, which have now been in effect for almost 90 days. We understand why, as the pandemic took hold, it felt necessary to make a plan to lead the city if council could not meet. But the city has made a graceful pivot to meeting online, for which I am deeply grateful. Now, going forward, we no longer need blanket permission for actions to be taken without consultation with council. The suspension of the PIA deadline is an example of an issue where slowing down and consulting in public with council at a meeting might have avoided some of the issues that arose around transparency and accountability. With the military occupation of DC next door, we are all highly sensitive right now to issues of the use of power and the rule of law. We do not know how long this pandemic may last. It could very realistically move into a cycle of decline and resurgence for years to come. But we cannot leave these blanket emergency powers in place indefinitely if a particular emergency action needs to be taken. The city manager has already asserted that she has that power, with or without the ordinance. We've survived these first very intense months, and we're grateful for all the hard work of the council and staff, especially on assisting residents in need. But at this moment, it is critical that council reassure the community and resume their baseline function of oversight of the manager and with it, our system of checks and balances. This will reassure the community that our city will maintain democratic principles, even as stressful times continue. Thank you.
All right, all right. Next, we have Mr. David Borden.
Mayor Stewart, may I suggest you go to Reginald Ruffin? I haven't been able to locate David Borden yet.
Okay.
Or Mary Machuie, so I'm looking for them.
All right, is Reginald ready?
Hello? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, okay, good, good. That's the best I can do for right now. So, good evening, everybody. I'm glad to see everybody healthy and doing well. I want to commend the focus far as the immediate action that was taken when it came to the Black Lives Matter sign. In the times that we're in at this time, and you don't normally hear me comment on this type of thing, but the times that we're in at this time, the sensitivity to that kind of issue is necessary, shows levels of humanity, levels of compassion, levels of empathy toward a situation that has ignited not only around this country but around the world. So it's necessary that we deal with this in a sensitive matter, and I thank you for taking off these signs. Now, when it comes to the city manager, wonderful that you stepped up, wonderful that you took charge when necessary, but at the same time, it's time to remove the emergency powers. Why? Because the council can do their job and function accordingly. So we appreciate that this has been done, but at the same time, that needs to be removed as soon as possible, in fact, it's going to end in the 90 days. Appreciate the service, we continue to move forward. Now, finally, all these things and all the issues that we're talking about is going to be rubbed by an old theme that I like to bring up, and that is community first. If we keep community first, all these other issues are taken care of. We don't have these kind of discussions, we don't have this kind of thing because we've kept out community first, whether it's using the public space, whether it's keeping in mind people, citizens, and the fact that their feelings and how they feel about certain issues, just keeping community first. I think everybody has that in their heart, but let's just keep it in our mind as well as we move forward as a city, as a team, as a family, Tacoma Park family, so that we can continue to move forward and make progress, and continue to be the example of the local UN here in this country, nation, especially what we've got going across, going across in DC, and some of the things that unfortunately seems to be dictatorial in some ways when you look at the behavior that's going on. I want to thank you for your time. Everybody stay safe and continue to be healthy. It's wonderful to see everyone. Take care.
Thank you so much. And do we know if Mr. Borden or Ms. Machuie has joined us yet?
Mr. Borden should be available to comment.
Great. Thank you for coming, Mr. Borden.
Thank you for including me. It's been comforting seeing our government stay strong and operating, and that we can talk to each other this way. I have a few issues to discuss relating to policing, and it's probable I won't get through all of them in my three minutes, so perhaps I'll continue with more information next week. For about 27 years, I guess, I've worked in drug policy reform, I run the organization StopTheDrugWar.org. Our issue often is inextricably intertwined with policing and with things that go wrong. My impression from what I've seen over the years is that the need to reduce the reasons and opportunities for non-consensual encounters between citizens and police, because those encounters, for that matter, even just the fear of those encounters has the potential to go wrong, even when officers don't act as responsibly, if not malevolently, as what we saw in Minneapolis. The militarization of policing is also been an important issue for us. I've done some work relating to the overuse of no-knock warrants or dynamic entry, popularly known as SWAT. There was a horrible incident of that in Berwind Heights, was it, 10, 15 years ago, that led Maryland to take the lead in a reporting bill. But that issue badly needs to get revisited. The state helped us move forward with the decriminalization of marijuana, but we continue to have arrest-based practices for other drugs, in some situations for marijuana. A program known as Law Enforcement-Assisted Diversion, which is in use in a number of US cities, including Seattle, provides an alternative model in which coalition of community stakeholders, along with people suffering from drug problems, operate a harm reduction-based program. People, instead of getting arrested for possession of even hard drugs, are referred to this program, which tries to meet them where they're at, help them make positive changes. And one of those changes can be moving toward abstinence, but it's not necessarily expected, it's not a requirement in and of itself.
Borden, your time's up, sorry. It's three minutes, thank you.
And Mayor Stewart, we do have Mary Machuie on the phone.
Phone?
Yes.
I'm what?
You can go ahead, Mary Jean.
Oh, thank you. I was trying to get on here, click here to join. Jesse sent me this message, and I clicked here to join at least six or seven times, but it won't allow me to join, so she gave me all these phone numbers, I called the first phone number, and here I am. Thank you. I just want to go on about the gentrification here in Tacoma Park. I mean, we moved here almost 35 years ago, and it was more black and brown and white people of different economic backgrounds. Now, developers are coming in and building, making the houses a lot bigger and charging like almost a million dollars for some of them, and then, upper-middle-class white people are moving in. We've got a next-door neighbor who has an au pair, I mean, which I could never afford. We have people hiring maids, things that I've never grew up with. I mean, can't these developers be stopped? And I don't know, it just, and it's, the black people are moving out, and a lot of black people that I know are moving to Prince George's County, and I just don't like it. And I see the police, I don't like the fact that most of the people in the police, I grew up with blue-collar background, even though my father was an engineer, he was also an alcoholic, and we didn't have that much money. But the police are mostly people who are not Harvard-educated, their parents are not Harvard-educated. These people are becoming police, most of them, because that's all they can do, maybe. And they're usually attacking people who are also low-income, in this case, low-income black people. So, and it looks like the wealthy people, the 1% or the 10%, they're like using it, they're just watching this as a game, watching the low-income, mostly-white officers attacking the mostly-low-income black people. It's like, why don't some of the wealthier people who are in charge do something about it? It seems like they're, it's like they're going back to the Roman days where they're gladiators or something, they're using these people as gladiators and pawns, you know? Anyways, thank you. Anyways, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So I believe the last person signed up for the evening to speak is Ms. Denise Jones, is she with us?
I have not been able to locate Ms. Jones, I'm afraid.
Okay, well, if we wait, I think I hear, no, all right. All right. Then I think those were all the people who who signed up for public comments this evening. Am I correct, Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, you, you have everyone who signed up by the deadline.
Great. Um, all right, then we will move on. I, I know there is actually a, a visual going on on Elm Avenue outside my window right now. I want to thank the people who are organizing it and this evening, people are lined up from social distancing from 410. They were trying to get all the way to Westmoreland this evening. So, and I think our, our colleague, Councilwoman DeBala may have stepped out for a moment to join them. So we now will move on to our voting session. Our first item is the second reading ordinance regarding traffic calming on the 7300 block of Wildwood Drive. This has not changed since our first reading. Would someone like to move this ordinance?
To move.
Councilmember Siri, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Councilmember Seaman's second. Any comments or questions on this one? Seeing none, no hands raised, will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar?
Hi.
Councilmember DeBala? Councilmember Kostik?
Hi.
Councilmember Siemens?
Hi.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Siri?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Next, we have the second reading ordinance regarding traffic calming on the 7600 block of Wildwood Drive. Would someone like to move that?
To move.
Councilmember Siri, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Kostik's second. Any questions or comments on that one? Seeing none, will the clerk call the vote?
Sorry, I do have a, oh, I'm sorry. We're still, are we still on the, the traffic coming?
Yes.
Yes.
Nope, I have a comment on the next one.
Okay, yep. Where, oh, call the vote.
Councilmember Kovar?
Hi.
Councilmember DeBala? Councilmember Kostik?
Hi.
Councilmember Siemens?
Hi.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Siri?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. I just wanted to check to see if Ms., did Ms. Jones join us?
Yes.
Why don't we, before we go on to the next resolution? Go to Ms. Jones?
She should be on.
Denise, can you hear us?
Sorry, I had to unmute and everything, thanks. Sorry about that. Yep, I appreciate you letting me speak briefly, I was working. I just wanted to offer my comments regarding the emergency powers for the city manager. I, I'm not for it, I'm really not for it, especially, and it's only highlighted for me in the, given the times that we are living in and the challenges, I want more transparency, not less. And I, I really think that we have to stretch ourselves to provide as much transparency as we can and not after the fact. I also wanted to speak about the flyer ban. I wasn't for it in the first place, I am pleased that it's been suspended. I hope that it'll be suspended forever. I was disturbed by the video that I saw the other night and of flyers being ripped down on Monday, late Monday evening. The timing couldn't have been worse. Anyway, I am, I am interested to, I also wanted to say that I was interested and a little, you know, concerned about how the Monday night Tacoma radio program would turn out. But I'm really hoping that that may be an invitation to for Tacoma Park residents to have different kinds of conversations, more thoughtful and, and real concrete conversations. And I hope that we continue to, to do that here. I have been discouraged, I've been very discouraged at times, very discouraged. But I do think that there are good hearts here in Tacoma Park. And that if we want to, we can do better. And I'm hoping that we all want to try, or most of us want to try. Thanks for letting me speak this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, and thank you so much for, for Monday night and to the girls of the Essex House Girls Club. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay, so now we'll go back to our agenda and we're up to our third voting item this evening. This is a resolution supporting small businesses and advancing public health by allowing the use of public and private space for outdoor seating sales and customer pickup. Before we go to the actual resolution, I believe our, our staff are going to walk us through some things, is that correct?
I, I think so. So I do want to just speak, first of all, the reason that this is being put forward is that on Friday afternoon, May 29th, Montgomery County moved into phase one reopening status with a very short introduction, announcement, short timeframe for, became effective on this past Monday, June 1st. And phase one will allow outdoor seating for restaurants with social distancing protocols, curbside sales for retail businesses and several other provisions. And so we, we thought we would have more time to work with businesses and residents and others to prepare for this. But reopening occurred very shortly. What we're seeing is that not only in Tacoma Park, but around the, not in Tacoma Park, but around Tacoma Park, there's a lot of efforts to open streets, provide sidewalk seating for residents, businesses, and have access that will allow some support for the businesses, which really need support, and that will allow for and protect public health by keeping people separated at appropriate distances while also making sure that folks with disabilities and others can walk past and that, that city streets are safe. And so we did a couple of things, we certainly got approached again by Old Tacoma Business Association with a proposal to close the lane of Laurel Avenue. We also are looking at other locations around the city because I think this is a citywide priority to ensure that we're allowing businesses to thrive as best they can in this time and that we are fair across the city about how that's done. Recognizing that different businesses are in different situations. They some have small sidewalks, some have parking lots that can be used, others have larger areas that are on private land and trying to figure out a way that we can help promote the citywide. So we did get a proposal by Old Tacoma Business Association and I think we have a slightly different approach because we want to make sure that we're looking at this all very fairly. Russ Grisby, are you prepared to talk a little bit about some of the provisions or, I'm trying to, and describe what that looks like?
I can, or I know Laura Barclay's on as well, if you'd like to have her do it.
I mean, I think that, I think that the items that we're thinking about, it may be easier, Mayor, to go through the ordinance as opposed to, to do this in a different way. But we are looking at ways to, in a fairly systematic way, with, with consultation, have a process in place where the council can allow for the use of some rights of way. In terms of travel lanes, one lane closest to the businesses on Laurel Avenue. And some potential space on Ann Street and Ward 6 and Holton Lane and Ward 6. Ann Street's a little bit easier to use because the crossroads market meets there, so we have some experience with that. Not sure if Holton Lane will exactly work, but we do have a number of opportunities, I think, to talk with folks and find some arrangements that work well and that are safe for the provision of food, for sitting, for seating for food, for consuming food. In some cases, it could be for a particular business, in other cases, it could be very communal. I think we're experimenting a little bit with this, and I think that that's one of the things that we're going to need to do because while we have some proposals about how to use parking spaces, how to use some sidewalk space where you can still pass. Once we get into it, there may be some things that aren't as safe and we want to move things around or find out what works and, and keep communicating about that. Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not sure exactly the process that we should be
That would be, I think it would be fine, I think, you know, it would be helpful. And thank you to the city manager for kind of laying out the context of why this is coming to us pretty quickly this evening, on this night. And also, I think another helpful thing would be, before the council actually starts to go through the resolution, is if, if it does pass, sort of what, what's the next steps, what happens after this?
Right, well, I think, I'm sorry?
I'm happy to do that, Jamie, did you want to jump in? Okay.
Russ?
So the, if the council decides to move forward on this, there are two sort of parallel pieces of it. One is the possibility of street closures and the other is the possibility of repurposing parkings, parking spaces on, on open streets in front of restaurants for additional space there. And there would be two different approaches to use that. So for street closures, for Laurel Avenue, we've already been in conversations with OTBA about ways to make that work and move forward. The next step is a schematic, a plan that lays out what the space is and what it's used for and what the possibilities are for retail spaces as they open and they might need something and safe pedestrian access. We have a good starting point, a good idea of what that would look like and then how to route traffic around the church and signage. So the, the steps would be first to develop the plan more specifically. Second, to set up a feedback mechanism where there's a, we can put a survey on the city website on this page that residents especially can let us know what they're experiencing and seeing as we, as we do some testing on this. And the third step is working with Public Works. We've already scoped out issues of signage, issues of, including moving the handicap space to the opposite side of Laurel Avenue. And then the provision of barriers at the ends of the street. For the parking spaces, we already have in place an outdoor cafe permit mechanism. And so I think we will continue to use that if a business wants the parking spaces in front of their business. There's an application already developed. We, it includes a staff review, we pull in code enforcement and public works and planning staff to look at issues of safety, traffic, logistical concerns that might come up. We would hope to move quickly on those. And, and obviously with, there'll be some doing this electronically and remotely and with social distancing. But I, but, but we've had this program for two years now, it was developed in 2018. And so I think that's pretty smooth, ready to roll.
If, if I can jump in, so one of the, one of the reasons for in, in the places where it makes sense to use the permit parking, I mean, the parking space process, permit process, we already have in there the provisions that, that keep it safe and that also monitor for noise issues and how to deal with alcohol and that kind of thing. So we've already got those standards in place, it's easier for us to, and we've got the forms. So it's, that part is pretty straightforward where it seems to apply. The other thing that we've also, that's included in this draft resolution that we're already working on is working with the larger shopping centers where the accessibility for the restaurants, et cetera, would be on the private property. And of course, it took a pandemic to have a conversation with Saul centers. But fortunately, they're also looking at ways to accommodate their businesses. They do want to have some successful arrangements that would be safe also for folks purchasing from their property businesses. So it's kind of a multi-step thing, there's some places where we're looking at, at use of this, the travel lane. Some places we're looking at parking spaces, there may be some places as we look through this that we can really think of communal spaces. There's, in a particular Ann Street, I think is appropriate for that as a, as one of those places. And, and to some extent, Holton Lane. And then there's, as the, the parking space process.
Great, thank you, I see Councilman Siri has a question?
Yes, thank you. So, city, city manager, you just brought up my point. And maybe this might be something that we may want to make sure is clear in the resolution that we're not just talking about use of these spaces for the purpose of dining opportunities or, you know, actual sales. But some of these spaces may serve better as communal spaces that are designed to promote community engagement and business, you know, business interaction. So Ann Street, for example, I wouldn't imagine us closing that permanently, but I could imagine there being more frequent, which we already have with the farmers markets on Wednesdays, but more frequent closures of Ann Street for the purpose of things like pop-ups or, you know, neighborhood dine-ins. So where you could come, get some of the food from the different vendors and, you know, and that kind of thing. So is that what you all, for some of these spaces, were envisioning that it, and would it make sense to try to incorporate that to some degree in the resolution that we're, we're voting on right now? Because it's, right now, it reads very much like about extension of business storefront, which for places like Ann Street and Holton may not be exactly right. It would be more, like that extension really needs to happen from Saul. And I agree wholeheartedly with the idea of really pushing them to make sure that we can do that. But I, I also like the idea of us being able to think about some of the streets that we have right now to better serve businesses and the community, right? So being able to bring them together in a space that's safe for all. So I just wanted to confirm that that was along the lines of what folks were thinking. And if so, would it make sense for us to try to just make that point a little clearer in the resolution?
I think that's fine, we were being very open about this because I think we're, you know, we do recognize there's really different situations for different businesses and places and, and different sizes of space. So we need to accommodate it and do different things where we can. I, that's, I mean, there's some excitement there, but it's also a way to provide support when you can't gather as tightly as we're used to being able to gather.
Yeah, and, and I actually think that this is a really unique opportunity for us to kind of try some of these, try some of these closures, try some of the space management at a time, although we're opening, we're entering into phase one, but traffic relatively speaking is still pretty light until most kind of get back into their regular commute. So this might actually be an opportune time for us to try some of these different options out. So I'm definitely looking forward to, to being able to move forward.
Thank you, and, and you do bring up a point that, about, about traffic and the changes. One of the things we heard in a variety of different suggestions about how long this trial period should be. And in the, in the draft ordinance, it said through December. Part of this is how does, how is reopening going to happen? And at some point, it's going to open and then it's going to And at some point, it's going to open and then it's going to close back up and then it's going to open again. And some things might not work, whatever. We do not know. And I, I mean, I think we're expecting to have. New spikes in the fall or in the winter. So how does that work and how do we be supportive? So part of this was to allow for flexibility.
Yep, great. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Kova.
Thank you. I just had to unmute. I, I appreciate it. And just had a few. General comments and then some questions for, for the staff. Before we get into the details of the, of the resolution, if that's okay. This is one that. I see a lot of different sides to, and I, I did put out a. Call, so to speak, to people in Ward One to, to give me their views on it. And the time was kind of tight, but I, but I did hear from a lot of people. And it really ran the gamut from people who said. There's already too much going on there now and they, they don't even like having as many businesses as there are there currently. To let's just close down all of Laurel Avenue permanently and then everything in between. So there's a wide range of. Views on the subject and that's just Laurel. It doesn't get into Holton Lane. Or Ann Street or, or some of the other areas, even on Carol Avenue, for example, although it's a state highway, the. Parking spaces could be made available for some of the businesses there. And so I think probably. Most folks I heard from are open to some version of this, but they really want to make sure. That a range of key factors are taken into account. And, and I made some suggestions, as did. One of my colleagues for some changes in the resolution and we can look, we'll be looking at that. Later on, but. I, I do want to say I, it's going to be the case that not every. Business will be treated the same just because there are differences in their situation. Some have. A substantial space on the sidewalk that they control, others don't. Some have parking behind and, and others don't. And there are a number of factors like that. And I don't think we can get to a point where. Literally every single business has the same exact benefits, but I think it's important to try to. Help them, but to help them in a way that also. Is helpful and respectful for. Residents and, and keeps the health concerns. In mind also. I, a few general comments and then some questions. I thought the gentleman who spoke earlier, and I heard from other people on this, well, I think it was Mr. Patton who spoke earlier. You know, does this, is there a way to do this, for example, Laurel Avenue? It wouldn't be 24/7. In particular, if. If the farmer's market's going to move back, there's an argument because the. Infrastructure for the other businesses would have to be shifted in any case. And so maybe it would work and. People who knew they had errands there could time it for when it was open. That's one thing I'd be interested in hearing from the staff about. I also think the idea of an addition to. The space for the businesses, and I would stress it's not just restaurants, but other businesses as well. There's probably enough space along there to have some general, general space as well for the public who. Could sit there, either with takeout or just if they hadn't purchased. An item from any of those places and, and sit there. So again, with social distancing, if we can work that out, I'd be interested in hearing what the staff have to say about that. Then a few other more specific questions. Emergency vehicle access to the area. Is there any concern about that if there's a fire or some other emergency? Who would be legally responsible if there were injuries, legally liable for that? And if there are other county code requirements that they've come into play. And so. And also what happens in terms of social distancing for the workers in the kitchens? Because I know in many cases, the kitchens are very tight. It's been less of an issue, though not entirely one that has disappeared recently with the takeout, but obviously if they ramp up some more, that could be a concern. And so. Before we get into the specifics of, of the resolution. And I'm not sure who the appropriate staff person would be, but I, I would like us to hear back on, on those points and. In particular, the idea of the public tables beyond the tables and whether there is some ability to do a variation on the 24/7. Closure.
So I can answer that. I think, I think there's, we have a lot of flexibility on this and we have a lot of interest in, in trying different options. I certainly see an opportunity and an interest in having the. Some communal tables. I mean, and one of the things that in, in terms of our staff working with businesses. Many businesses are very nervous about reopening and, and, and many of the staff don't want to go and do waiting of tables and, you know, so they'd rather just do carry out. Have carry out and have them people go to a communal table and eat. So there's differences as we've found. By a lot of different businesses about what their model is that makes the most sense. And so we would want to, to work with them. You know, I, I think there's, I think there's a lot of flexibility also about the time when that happens. And, and so whether it's every day or whether it's, you know, as Councilmember Cersei mentioned, you know, there could be special events, that kind of thing. I think there's a variety of models.
And, and those legal questions, if we could get some feedback.
So, so already we have the, the, in the places we're talking about, we already have use. And it falls under our liability arrangements. And there's, that's part of the reason, especially for the parking space thing. You know, we've got a, we've got a permit system that identifies that process too. And so that's part of the reason it's useful to work within those parameters. But we have events all the time in the streets and in a right of way. And so we would follow the processes that we use for that.
Okay. I think it would be helpful to have the, make sure we knew what the protocols were for. Emergency situations too. And, and I know we do that anyway, but just.
We, we do that anyway for the, I mean, the, the, the fire engines know what to do when their farmers markets are in place. So I mean, it's. It, in all of these locations, it's not very long. You know, there's not large distances.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Next is Councilwoman Kostick.
Thank you very much. I've had an opportunity to talk with a number of residents about this as. Mr. Moyer and Mr. Patton and several others alluded to earlier. We had a meeting last night. Among the Neighborhood Association. We also had a meeting, just an informal office hours meeting last Friday. And I really appreciate all of the input that I've gotten from residents as well as assistance from staff and from Laura at OTBA and. Thinking through this to the point that we're at right now, obviously recognizing that there are still unknowns and questions. I have a couple of thoughts and then a couple of more specific questions. First of all, I think it's important that we do take this action to support our small businesses. One of the statistics or figures that Laura gave at our meeting last night was an example of a business. In Old Town that has, currently has about 50 dining spots. And even with this action, would have only 22. Dining spots if we were to take this action and allow for outdoor seating. So even with this in place, most of our restaurants are still likely to see pretty significant reductions in their seating capacity. Not to mention the fact that we don't know how many people will be coming to, to frequent those restaurants. So I do think this is something we need to. To address, and I do think this is a good way to do it. I know a, a number of questions have been raised regarding not just allowing the space for businesses. And not just restaurants, but also other, potentially other businesses as well as for general public use. And I think that is a great idea. I, I strongly support that. I also think just looking at how the space is allocated right now, it is not. A space that is in any of the cases for those streets or for the parking spaces, but it's something that is really available. To the general public. It's really available to car users and that's a select population and that doesn't include everyone. So to me, this is actually an opportunity to look at things differently and potentially move away from that paradigm towards. Something that is much more public and provides more public use. I appreciated that Councilmember Cersei's comments earlier with regard to the fact that this resolution does seem. Focused particularly on the business and outdoor dining aspect. And I agree, I would like to. Propose, and I know we're going to get into some more specific language, but I would like to propose that we add some wording. To broaden it out a little more and suggest perhaps we add to some of the, the resolved clauses. The phrase and other public uses so that that's something that will be looked at as we consider street closures and public, public use, because that is something. That I think will be very important. With regard specifically to Laurel Avenue, since that is the biggest impact to or three residents. The concerns I've heard most, and I think they were raised during the public comment period tonight. Were concerns about increased traffic on Walnut and West Morland in particular. Concerns about safety in terms of cars zooming through their neighborhoods, increased volume of traffic. And concerns about parking. So we, we discussed a few things at the meeting last night that I think would be useful in terms of addressing these concerns. And a few of those, to me, that are most important are going to include posting signs. We talked about the challenges with the jurisdictional boundary with DC. But we absolutely need to post signs to direct traffic to turn and go around the church so that they're not turning right and going down and going through Walnut. I'm sure some still will, but as much as possible signage will very much help. And I do think there is a way to do that by posting those signs on the Tacoma Park side. And still making it visible to people. We also will need increased parking enforcement, at least at the beginning with regard to West Morland. That is a permit parking area only for a number of spots. And. If, if there is a significant uptick in parking there, it, it will be difficult for people who live there to park. And then I, I also want to make sure that we're thinking through access to the post office in particular, since that's. A public facility and a facility that a lot of people need to access and that people who may be more vulnerable and may not necessarily be comfortable. Going out to a restaurant to dine, but do need to go to the post office. So I want to make sure, first of all, that it's accessible to people in terms of. Where the handicap parking space is as well as allowing them to walk through a space that should be relatively. Open and provide with social distancing to access it. I've, I've heard some suggestions about the handicap spot actually remaining on that side of the street. I don't know if there's any way to do that. If there is, I think that would be. Worth considering if there's a way to have people pull in. Kind of straight instead of turning and, and, and figure that somehow. I'd be interested in seeing if that's possible, just to allow for easier access to the businesses and to the post office. My questions, specific questions are in terms of a timeline. I know people are pretty interested in when this might. Be enacted, when the actual closure of Laurel might, might happen and. When they would see some more specific schematics in terms of. Where things will actually be laid out. And, and for example, I, Roz and I brainstormed a little bit when she first noted this to me. And I was. Noting that maybe it makes sense to, to move the sidewalk space. Out farther so that people aren't walking through an area where waiters are potentially going back and forth. I don't know if that is. Is the best design or not, but I know people are interested in what that design will be. So I'm curious about what the timeline will be for that. Interested in how much, this is a question that's been raised by a few people, how much it will cost the city as well as potential revenues to the city through the permits? As well as what that permit process is. I'm, I'm curious if the permit process is something. That will make sense or needs to be modified. From what we have been using to now. And then finally. I would really like to remain flexible in terms of potentially being able to address. Traffic impacts on the neighborhood. And there's been some brainstorming in the neighborhood about. What might be done. And one thing that people may or may not support, but has been thrown around a little bit is the idea of making Walnut a one-way. To try to reduce the impact. So that, that's one thing I think might be considered. There might be other options as well, but I do hope that we'll have. An opportunity to look at that and that those potential changes will be a part of the future process.
If I could just jump in with a quick answer on the outdoor cafe permit, it's available online. On the city website. If you just drop in outdoor cafe, it'll pop up. And the application is available and the code, the language that's in the code, chapter eight. Is, is linked there. So people can take a look now if they're curious.
In, in terms of cost and revenues and all of those kinds of things. The other jurisdictions that are looking at this are tending not to charge or to charge a very minimal amount. So other jurisdictions that have the same kind of process. Don't want to burden the businesses by having a, a fee related to it. Or at least not much. I think the, the other thing to balance is what does it cost? To not have our businesses be healthy. And so, you know, we do want revenue from the businesses and over time. And so. We don't have good numbers for this. I don't think it's. Large amounts of money for the kinds of signage and, and that kind of thing that's, that will be involved in these, but the. I don't anticipate revenue from the permits. I, I don't anticipate that being a revenue source. I certainly would hope that healthy businesses would be able to pay their employees and pay taxes and, and all of that.
Does the current permitting, if I'm remembering right, I thought the current permitting system required payment. Is that, am I remembering that wrong?
I think we would have to make a, I think we would have to make a modification. That's something I think we would have to look at.
Okay. And are you looking also at streamlining the, the permit process a little bit to make sure that? I, I mean, I don't know, maybe, maybe businesses don't consider it onerous right now, but. Considering making that something that is both effective, but also not too cumbersome.
Yeah, I don't think it's a cumbersome process and we certainly want them to think through how they lay out their, their. Tables and things because we want the safe access past the properties. I mean, it's going to be a little different because this needs to fit. The public health, social distancing requirements.
I just have one final question. With regard to changes that might need to be made later on, if, if we find later in this process that something isn't working. Particularly for our neighborhood. What capacity will the council have? I, I know we're, we're obviously directing staff and I know that staff will work with council, but. Should we decide that a change needs to be made in the future since. We have enacted this, what, what capacity do you foresee us as a council having in terms of directing changes?
I think the. The most direct access, the most direct control you have is over the use of the public streets. And so that's something that's traditionally been a decision by the council. I wouldn't, that's why this is before you actually with some of that in the, in the language. The use of parking spaces and sidewalks and moving those things around tends not to be as much of a, an area that has a lot of council discussion. In, at least in terms of resolutions and the actions on them. But we want this to work and we want it to make sense for residents and for businesses and for the council. And so. I'm not sure how that gets, it, it seems like there's some good language that's been suggested to, to talk about that. I would just anticipate that kind of language in the resolution.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next we have Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would first like to thank the staff for bringing this idea to us and, and putting together a plan on how this could work. I also appreciate the feedback that we got from the community, especially this evening. To help identify some of the issues and, and considerations before the decisions made. I'll preface my, my questions and comments. First by saying that, you know, this is not just. A situation where we're trying to help our local businesses during normal times. This is. Exceptional times, as I know everybody knows. And. And it's important for us, if we want these businesses to recover and, and be. Healthy and vibrant participants in our community. I think we need to extend our hand to them and, and help them in whatever ways we can. And I'll go further to say that. You know, some of the comments tonight were that, well, we're doing something special for these businesses, not others. And I think the answer to that is we had. Better figure out how we can help the other businesses too. Although this is not a model that's going to fit every business in town. It's something that, that works for. One segment of the businesses where there happens to be space available that we can make available. To help the businesses and it's. You know, I look forward to hearing back from community members on. And it's, you know, I look forward to hearing back from community members on ideas and suggestions on how we can use public resources to help those other businesses. I'm not talking about just, you know, going out and throwing cash at them. But what are other ways that we can, can help our businesses to survive during this difficult time? And so back on the specifications, I think, you know, the other council members have certainly addressed these. But I, I am concerned about the post offices in, in both the, both of the neighborhoods. I don't think it's enough just to say, well, there's no parking in front of the post office. I think we've got to have good solution, good alternatives for people who are using those post offices. And I wonder if part of that solution might be to cross the street from the Laurel Avenue office. If we shouldn't designate a couple of those parking spots over there as restricted for post office patrons use. It's anyways, again, I appreciate the fact the staff is going to be looking at these concerns and, and coming back with with a plan on how we can refine this and make it work. And then, again, the same is true with the cut through traffic. I'll let this cause you make sure that that gets, gets taken care of adequately. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar had something else. Did you want to add to what you had before, Councilmember Kovar?
Why don't I go after the other people speak? I'll be quick at the end.
Councilmember Smith.
I think Councilmember DiBala was next, so.
Your hands, I, I don't care. Councilwoman DiBala, the hands are showing up in the order. They show up, so.
Thank you. I was waving my hand just so that I would get, get noticed at some point as.
I know the hands, when you click your hand, you show up in the order, so.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Smith. I'll be brief. Thank you to staff for proposing this. I think this is necessary. I think it's a good idea. The things that are important to me are to support not just the businesses in one part of town, but the businesses in all the parts of town. All the different parts of town. So I like that there are several places that are being considered for, for these different techniques. And not to be just supporting restaurants, but as has been made clear to be supporting all the different types of businesses we have. This model doesn't fit everybody, but for those small businesses that it does fit in some fashion to pursue that makes a great deal of sense to me. As Councilmember Siemens said, we need to lend them helping hands so they'll be, they'll be there for us in the long run. And to do this by helping them to figure out how to protect, to open, reopen safely, to protect the helping safety of our residents. Several people have already taught, touched on the notion of building in some public, public spaces, public, public access of some sort. I like that. I have just a couple of questions to ask about the end date. Why December 31st instead of 30, 60 days after the end of the emergency order? And to ask, we have obviously had input from Old Town Business Association, but I'm not sure I've heard whether Crossroads has weighed in. And to third, to suggest that there may turn out to be other locations where some of these approaches are useful. And can we make sure we build that into the resolution? Thank you.
If, if I might answer, answer those questions quickly, Mayor. The, the I'll go to the last point first. There's nothing that excludes the, just to the business areas that are mentioned here. So, you know, the sidewalk on Maple, the variety of places can be used, some different other kind of parking spaces can be used. The, the concept of why this isn't written as 30 to 60 days after the end of an emergency period is that the emergency period is a little bit more related to health that I believe than the health of the fiscal health of the businesses. And so, and how people may interact. And, and also if we have a situation where we reopen a little bit more and then we have to back up and then we go forward. And to take this down and up is very difficult. So I don't have a good answer for when that will finally be. But I didn't want to have it end right before the holiday season when people might want more sales for sidewalk sales or something. So I, it was just, it was a number.
Suzie, I'd be happy, this is Samira, I'd be happy to fill folks in on the conversation around the crossroads.
Yes, we have some good ones.
The big, the big difference here, we're talking about public space, which the city and the council has control over versus private space. Which you can also refer to kind of as an open space conversation for private owners. I will emphasize that they are highly concerned. You know, you see those great big parking lots and you think they've got a lot of space. They're highly concerned about liability specifically around the purple line and how that is redirecting traffic through those parking lots. So we've had a number of conversations there that we've started. We do have growing partnerships, I'd like to say, after our last conversation in my follow-up call with Saul Centers who are very open with their huge sidewalks, actually. They're very open to discussions around using their sidewalks, not just for the restaurants, but also for the other small businesses. This conversation of curbside pickup, what it looks like in shopping centers is often a table in front of the door with a few items that the small business owner will go back inside to get and bring out to you to try to reduce the number of people in the store. They're currently open. They are currently serving customers, but there's, you know, a very, very pithy number of customers right now. And the real concern for the restaurants is having the ability to actually have folks enjoy the restaurant the same way. So the crossroads conversations, I think, and we've had a great step forward with Saul Centers. But we are also, for example, focusing in around Red Chili's restaurant and their property owner. So there's a number of private property owners that we're having the conversations with. I'll also say we have talked to the businesses that are on Anne. That area where the farmer's market is looks like, oh, no one lives there. Well, actually there are eight businesses there. And, you know, when you think about, you know, entrance and egress and things like that, those are some of the concerns that we have. You know, Talisha spoke about a couple of alternatives and I do think as long as we stay flexible, we can stay supportive. Our businesses are devastated. What it looks like is a lack of, it's a lack of funding, it's a lack of customers, it's also a lack of information. The county opened and, you know, they just kind of heard it through the grapevine. And lastly, I'll say all of those things equal a, a drop in revenue to the city. Because, you know, the businesses are also taxpayers. So all of those things are what we're juggling in the crossroads and then trying to convince property owners you know, they'll not be legally putting themselves in a risky position by, you know, adding outdoor seating. So that's just the update, just to give you a little bit more color around the crossroads. And Roz and I, so Roz has been working on the public space side and I've been working on the private space side in just for your kind of, you know, information and further outreach.
Great. Well, thank you.
Sorry, I was on mute. All right, Councilmember Smith, you want to go now?
Yeah, I'll go now. Thanks. I want to thank everyone for putting this presentation together for us, this proposal. When it first came out, I was hesitant. You know, I heard from a number of residents that, you know, they didn't really want to see this happen. But I think with COVID-19, it has changed everything. And big and small businesses are really hurting. So I, I, I like the idea that we are being proactive and trying to find a way to figure out how we can service people. But I, I do have a couple of questions. One, what would be the protocol if someone is, someone tests positive that has gone to one of these businesses to eat or to, to, you know, eat outside or, or takeout or whatever? Do, have we thought about that? What does that look like? Has the county released any guidelines on that? Another question I have is, Ms. Grisby talked about surveys, but I think it, it's important that our surveying is a lot more dynamic in this type of situation so that we can survey all the stakeholders, whether it's not just the business owners, the people that are, are going to the business, the residents that are living around the, the business. We can use the Esri product that we already described to, that could put a dynamic survey out in the field that we can do on a regular basis. Another thing I think that would be really helpful is we could also come up with a before we go and close off Laurel, if the council goes forward with it. And after we go close off Laurel, traffic patterns using Waze's data. It's another option that we can use with Esri. That would give us a sense of whether or not there are problems with cut through traffic, whether or not, whether, so we don't have to just, you know, say that, that anecdotally something has happened, we can actually have real data that actually explains what the situation is. And then finally, you know, there's, there is a restaurant in Ward Five that would really appreciate the type of attention, the, the detail that is being put into this proposal to be given to them. I would love to see that something like that could happen for, for Mansa and other restaurants that are in the city. I mean, this is, COVID-19 is not something that is going to go away this month, next month, maybe a year or so from now until there's a vaccine when people feel comfortable going inside a restaurant to have dinner. So I think all our restaurants need to find some way that they can take this pilot program and shoehorn it into their business.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. I'll just note that, you know, fortunately Montecundo, Beijing Delight have some space of their own. So we would want to work with them, but this again goes with the idea of, you know, looking at the different locations and working with folks. Ms. Cook-Gaines has been doing a lot of outreach to the businesses about that. The protocol when someone tests positive is a county issue. They have the contact tracers and that kind of thing. But the other thing, and you'll hear some of this next week, is that we're looking at also ways that the businesses can have access perhaps to contracts for cleaning that's in a better situation than, than they have currently. So we, we're trying to help both facilitate the county doing what they need to do, but also help the businesses take control and be comfortable. One of the things that we have to do through the whole city is we have to make sure that people understand that coming and shopping in Tacoma Park is a safe activity and it needs to be safe. And so we want to work both to market that, but also to, to ensure that that's the case. Because people aren't going to come where they don't feel safe. And so part of all of this arrangement is to have the space to provide safe provision of services and, and gatherings. But also we're working on other fronts to try to make sure that other aspects of safety in the businesses are, are promoted. And I, and I want to address just for a moment, the two post offices. I've, I mean, I'm not comfortable frankly going into the post offices. So I appreciated one of the citizens making a comment about that. And so there may be a way, and I don't know that there is, but there may be a way to, to help do some curbside service that would help in both cases. And, and I think that's something maybe we can do some outreach on if we haven't already. The other thing I would just like to note is that I've heard a couple of people talk about, not necessarily tonight, but I heard Councilmember Smith mention. We don't have a lot of staff to be able to do lots of traffic data collection and that kind of thing. So where there's some shortcuts, some software, some other kind of thing, fine. We don't have good pre-data, so we don't have, and things are going to be changing over time. So I just, we're going to, I think this is going to be more of a lot of consultation with folks as opposed to a lot of time spent on data collection and distribution.
And, and that's why I suggested Waze because they already have all the data, so.
Right, I appreciated that.
Great, Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you. And I'm sorry I didn't mention these points before, and they do follow up on what other people mentioned. But I do think that, that access for disabled people, both pedestrians and parking, is going to be one of the big pieces that we'll have to figure out. And someone mentioned previously the idea of keeping that one space that's in front of pizza movers. And I don't think it would be safe to pull into and then back out. But maybe there's a way by removing one of the chains in the middle strip there to permit someone to make a U-turn to get out of there. So I really think we have to crunch down on really understand and figure out how the disability question will be addressed. And then the second thing is, and this was also mentioned, but I think if we do get to reopening along these lines, some staff presence and maybe it's the neighborhood services people. But I think it'll be, it'll be helpful directing traffic, but also ensuring that we can't just let the, the sort of six feet be self-enforced. I think it's going to be necessary to really have, in the initial period anyway, some sort of staff there. And I mentioned previously that, you know, the speed limits aren't being enforced that well. This is not the time to have a big police presence. That goes against some of the other things that we're talking about. But I think this will be the type of thing, if we go forward with it, that we can't just sort of set it up and say, now it's set. I think especially at the beginning, there will be uncertainty and it will be important to have in all the different locations throughout the city where we're doing it, some sort of staff presence to ensure that the, it's functioning well and safely. So I just add that. Thank you.
Great. All right, before we move, since everyone made general comments, which regarding the resolution, I just say, I agree with a lot of the questions that were asked. I think one of the things I just want to underscore, which I don't think we talked about much, is the fact that this is being done also regionally. Washington DC is looking at the closing of streets. Montgomery County, if you haven't checked it out, has a great website on, and their shared streets initiative. So I, I think there is a lot of learning that we will have from adjoining jurisdictions about what is also working in terms of some of the things. I mean, our streets, I know are unique. They're smaller. We have to pay more attention to some of the cut through traffic than in some areas. And we're not as laid out on a grid system as some other places. However, I do think this, there, there are some things that we'll be able to share and learn as this is done regionally. In addition, I think it's why it's important that we move forward with this and look at it because we don't want our businesses at a disadvantage to other places. If just down the street, if the district or nearby in Silver Spring, if those businesses are able to figure this out in cooperation with the, the governments, then our businesses will be harmed if we can't figure it out. Because people won't, people won't go downtown. People won't go to the crossroads or other places. They'll go where it's more convenient. So I do think it's important for us to move forward with this. And we'll get to it in a moment and I'm going to share my screen so that we can walk through. And we'll get to it in a moment, and I'm going to share my screen so that we can walk through the some of the amendments that are being proposed for the resolution that I think addresses some of the concerns we've heard. And I, I very much appreciate members of the public, and I have to say thank you to Councilwoman Kostic who has, who quickly held a number of meetings with residents in the area to get their feedback since this, they come up quickly for us. I just want to make sure any of the city staff have any other points to make before we move forward to the resolution. All right, not hearing any.
Hi, Mayor Kate.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you for bringing up the surrounding jurisdictions because I will say as the economic development manager, competition is, is really tough out here. So this in particular, if we appear that we can't keep up or that we can't make the decisions to support our businesses, it'll be very obvious to the surrounding competitive areas.
All right. Can people tell me what they can see on the screen? Can you see the?
Your screen, yeah.
Yeah, you see the?
The document?
Yeah.
It looks good.
Okay. I want to.
Okay.
I wouldn't mind it a tad bigger if that's possible. Wrong way.
I know.
It was bigger and then it wasn't. Thank you.
Can you still see it? Is that good?
Yeah, it's perfect. Thank you so much.
Great. All right, so we'll walk through this.
Mayor, if I can just say for a minute, some of the things ended up under my name because I had been helping do an assembling of it, but for example, these first changes are actually Councilmember Kostic. So I just, in fairness, I didn't want people to think I was responsible, I support them, but I don't want to take credit for things that she had mentioned. So that's just the way it was assembled, ended up under my name in some cases. So just to be clear about that.
Thank you, Councilmember Kovar.
Oh, and when we, when we get to them, if someone wants to move them, the different amendments, the person who proposed them can do that. So I see here we have some.
Yeah, this was, this was me, Councilmember Kostic. I just added this in here. It's, you know, not a substantive change, but I felt like it was a little unclear what the emergency order was in response to. So I just added in response to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Great. So Councilwoman Kostic moved this amendment. Do I have a second for the amendment?
Mayor Stewart, this is Jessie. Was the, the resolution moved yet? Are we going to start by moving the resolution?
No, I just jumped right into the changes. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and move the, the.
All right, Councilwoman Kostic will move it. Do I have a second? Councilmember Kovar is seconding. All right, now we will get to amendments. The, so the first is offered by Councilwoman Kostic. Do I have a second? Councilwoman Dibala, second. Any questions on this one? Pretty straightforward. Does a clerk want to call the vote on this amendment?
Really want me to. Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Aye.
Councilmember Kostic?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith? Mayor Stewart?
Yes. All right, that's the first one. Then moving down, we have a whereas clause that took out advocacy. And so this reads now, whereas support for outdoor areas set aside for dining and curbside pickup on private property should also encourage, be encouraged to support the business community and provide safer dining options.
This was me. I'll move that. It just seemed awkward to suggest that we were doing advocacy. And I know Councilmember Dibala and I had a brief discussion about this, just with, with the idea that we would want to provide support for these, these businesses rather than necessarily advocate to them.
Great. Do I have a second for the amendment? Councilmember Dibala, any discussion of this amendment? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Aye.
Councilmember Kostic?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes, and I was, yes, on the first.
Thank you. Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
And Mayor Stewart?
Yes. All right, next is an additional whereas clause. This whereas clause says city staff can, can work with neighborhood associations, local organizations, residents and other stakeholders to identify and implement measures on effective and adjacent streets to ensure traffic, bike and pedestrian safety. Who is moving this one?
Oh, sorry. I think, yes, I added this, the, the whereas above refers more to the business side of things. And I felt like it was important to also reference that safety and traffic and pedestrian safety would be concerned.
I'd be glad to second that. And I do want to stress the potential for some bailout traffic and cut through traffic affecting some of the sections of Ward One. In addition to Westmore and the Wacko area is definitely there. And I think this helps to underline the significance of that. So I second.
Yeah, so thank you. I know, I was just looking at it because I think instead, I was offer a, a, a suggestion for the amendment is instead of say to ensure to provide for traffic, bike and pedestrian safety.
That's good with me.
I just don't know if we can ensure all those things. All right, any other discussion of this amendment? All right, seeing none, then we'll ask the clerk to call the vote on that amendment.
Councilmember Kovar? Councilmember Dibala? Councilmember Kostic? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Okay, the next one is just highlighted. It was in the, it doesn't need to be amended because it was already in the resolution, but I just want to make sure Councilwoman Circe is good with this. She is nodding her head, so she is good. So we're moving on. All right, now we're into our resolve clauses. Let's see if I can move. So there are a couple of things going on here. Let's look at now, therefore be it resolved that the city, addition of the city council of Tacoma Park supports temporarily modifying existing uses of public space, including sidewalk, roads, on-street parking and parking lots for outdoor dining. I just added and enjoyment to speak to some of the comments earlier. Curbside pickup and other public, it should be uses to assist Tacoma Park's businesses, employees and residents during the COVID-19 pandemic. And then we have another addition, provided such changes can be implemented in ways that maintain appropriate social distancing requirements, allow for accessible and safe sidewalk and business access for all residents, and are consistent with county and other public health guidelines aimed at reducing the spread of COVID-19. Would someone like to just move that whole changed paragraph? Councilmember Kovar, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Councilwoman Kostic? Any discussion? Anyone want to make any changes or thoughts to that whole? So we're going to vote on the whole resolve clause.
And I would just say, Mayor, with your additions, this really gets to this point about the the need, the need to create, you know, I don't know whether it would be picnic tables, but the picnic table concept so that there can be public use of the spaces and it's not just limited to business use of the public space.
Yeah. Great. The clerk want to call the roll on this one?
Okay, Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala? Councilmember Kostic?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
And that was an I over here as well.
Thank you.
Great. All right, so this next one, oh, sorry. All right, be it further resolved that the council directs the city manager to work with key stakeholders, including residents, neighborhood associations, businesses, business associations and landlords to identify and implement temporary changes such as modifications to the use of sidewalks, on-street parking and parking lots for curbside pickup for restaurants and other businesses and outdoor dining for restaurants and other public uses to assist Tacoma Park's businesses, employees and residents during the COVID-19 pandemic, as well as temporary changes such as installing directional signage barriers, traffic mitigation measures to address and ensure public health, pedestrian safety and accessibility with special attention given to the needs of people with disabilities and parking and vehicle safety, including safety, safe operation of vehicles in adjacent neighborhoods. All right. Hey, would someone like to move that there, that resolve clause?
I'll move.
Councilmember Kovar, second?
I'll second it.
Councilwoman Kostic?
I, I do have a proposed change though. I, I would propose that we remove four restaurants after outdoor dining before other public uses, just because there might be outdoor dining that is not necessarily specific to restaurants. If people want to get carryout from someplace and bring it or bring their own food or just be outside. I'd just like to be less specific there.
Great. I think that's consistent with what we were talking about. Anyone want to raise any objections to that? Okay, Councilmember Kovar, since you moved it, are you okay with that change?
Yes.
All right. Any other changes or suggestions? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on that amendment.
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Aye.
Councilmember Kostic?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Okay, next resolve clause. Be a further resolved that the council authorizes the partial closing of Laurel Avenue, Ann Street and Holton Lane for outdoor dining and enjoyment, curbside pickup and other public uses consistent with county and state guidelines if such closings are determined to be beneficial in creating spaces while protecting public health during COVID-19 pandemic and providing for pedestrian and automobile safety and safe operation of vehicles in neighborhood streets. Someone like to move that?
I'd be glad to move it. I have, I do have a question though. Is it necessary to mention here that other streets could be closed? Because I know people have mentioned, they wondered whether it was appropriate only to select three. I think the three were selected for specific reasons because they're relatively short and, and not major, major thoroughfares. But, or is it evident that just by choosing these three, we don't mean that others couldn't be done? That's one.
My answer to that is that these are ones that seemed most most easily used where the travel lane issue would be affected. We may find another one, and then I'd like to bring that back to council because I really do, there has been a tradition of the council acting on closing travel lanes. This in no way precludes us from using parking spaces on other streets and some other kinds of things. So I, I, I've interpreted it liberally and that's what I think is being indicated here, but.
Yeah, and the only, thank you. And the only other question I have was whether, and I don't know whether my colleagues agree with me about this, but whether this could be a, somewhere in this clause would be a spot to mention or signal that it could work to not have it be a 24/7 closure.
I, I, you know, I think those are detail, if we start getting into the, and my preference would be not to get into necessarily those details, but have those discussions because there are a lot of things I think we could potentially add to this.
I think it, it may go to the, to the question about what does partial mean?
Right.
Okay. I mean, as long as the staff interprets this as meaning that that's part of the, the consideration, I'm fine not specifically mentioning.
And I, and I, just to add to what the city manager said, you know, Laurel, Ann Street and Holton Lane are all streets that the city council has in the past approved the closing of, and especially Laurel and Ann fairly regularly, Holton a little less so. But there, but I think in terms of providing with this sort of this resolution and moving forward with this, providing the city staff the authority to close these streets, that's one of the reasons that I, you know, I feel comfortable moving quickly with this is because we have a history here. We, we've done this before temporarily. And so I'd like to keep it just to those three. And if there are conversations about closing other streets, if that comes back to council. All right, so Councilmember Kovar, you're good moving this as it is?
Yes.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second it. And could we add pedestrian bicycle and automobile safety?
Yes. Is that okay with you, Councilmember Kovar?
Yes, yes.
Cool. Any other comments, changes? All right, seeing none, will the clerk call the vote on that amendment?
Sure, Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Aye.
Councilmember Kostic?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe? Mayor Stewart?
Yes. All right, the next resolve clause, be a further resolved that the city manager will work to ensure that public health and safety, pedestrian accessibility, traffic safety and noise affecting residential areas are addressed in the design of the outdoor dining and enjoyment, curbside pickup and other public use plans, and will make modifications on an ongoing basis as needed to ensure that these factors are appropriately addressed as reopening continues and as there are changes to the public health guidelines in the pandemic. Someone like to move this?
Again, these are collaborative with, with the mayor and Councilmember Kostic. I'm happy, I'm happy moving it.
I'll second it.
All right, any other comments or questions? I love that we work so collaboratively. All right, will the clerk call the vote on this one?
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Aye.
Councilmember Kostic?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Oops, sorry, I needed myself. Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Okay, next one. Be a further resolved that the city manager will report back to the council within 30 days of the date of enactment of this resolution and periodically thereafter on temporary actions taken under this resolution, including by providing to the extent possible data on business traffic and parking activity.
And so I would just say on this one, you know, the, you work on these things before you hear everything. So one question I have is whether the 30 days is the right timeframe, because I know it may take a little time to settle these things in motion. And, and so maybe there won't be enough of an experience by the time 30 days are up for that to be a meaningful timeframe. And then the second question is, I mean, it does say to the extent possible that data is there. So maybe data isn't, or maybe some of the things that Councilmember Smith suggested, I'd be open to changing both the number of days and the language on data if those aren't realistic in some fashion. But I do think it's vital to have a relatively soon report back both initially and an ongoing, an ongoing basis, simply because we're doing this on a rapid timeframe tonight.
So I don't have a problem with a 30-day report. I'm not there, you know, we're obviously hoping to move.
hoping to move this relatively quickly, because the businesses need the help. So we would, we would be seeing something. So I don't have a problem with the 30 days, and I also recognize we're in June, and then it's July, and then it's August, when there's August recess. So I think having some report back relatively soon makes some sense. So it's fine with me.
Okay. Um, so has someone moved this one yet? No? Does it move it?
I'll move.
Councilmember Kovar, do I have a second?
Okay.
All right, Councilmember Smith, second. With, any questions or changes on this one? All right, will the clerk call the vote on this amendment?
Councilmember Kovar.
Hi.
Councilmember Dibala.
Hi.
Councilmember
Hi.
Kostic.
Hi.
Councilmember Siemens.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Hi.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. All right, last resolve clause. All right, be a further resolve that the city manager will work with residents, neighborhood associations, businesses, business associations, and landlords, make needed adjustments to these plans to ensure public and traffic safety, adequate parking enforcement, pedestrian accessibility, appropriate amounts of parking, including for those with disabilities, to react to changes in public health guidelines due to pandemic, and to assist Tacoma Park businesses, employees, and residents during the COVID-19 pandemic. Someone like to move this one?
I'll move.
Councilmember Kostic moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Kovar, any changes or questions? All right, seeing none, will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar.
Hi.
Councilmember Dibala.
Hi.
Councilmember Kostic.
Hi.
Councilmember Siemens.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Hi.
And Mayor Stewart.
Yes. All right, does anyone have any other amendments or questions before I call the vote? All right, seeing none. We have a resolution on the table with amendments. Will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar.
Hi.
Councilmember Dibala.
Hi.
Councilmember Kostic.
Hi.
Councilmember Siemens.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Hi.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. All right, great, thank you, everyone. I want to thank the, the staff for putting this together so quickly, and to my colleagues, and to, especially to the members of the public that provided the feedback. I'm sure we will be continuing this conversation over the next few weeks and months. Now, we move to council comments. We are done with our voting session. Do you have any council comments this evening? Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to call attention for anyone, I know many people in the community are concerned about the woman who lives up on the corner of Piney Branch and Flower Avenue. She's homeless and, and has accumulated a lot of possessions that she stores around here, there on the corner. I just wanted to let you know that this evening they took her to the hospital to check her condition, because evidently she is, someone was concerned that she was experiencing some distress. And so, you wonder where she's disappeared to, that's where she is, in good care. That's all, thank you.
Thank you very much for that update. Councilman Dibala?
Yes. This, this is one of those times when nation, nationwide issues come, come home to Tacoma, and forces us to think not just about our little city, but about everything else that's going on around. So I want to acknowledge and thank Forest Park neighborhood residents for organizing a vigil tonight at 8 o'clock out all along up and down Elm Avenue, as far as I could see, to recognize, to take a moment for, to recognize the, the police killings of George Floyd and so many others, and to challenge each other as neighbors to name two things that people would individually do to take action, to combat the epidemic of racism in our country. And I so appreciate that. And I want my neighbors to know, since I couldn't stick around for more than a couple minutes, that I am also very sad and angry, because I do believe that we're better than this. And it's not lost on me that, at the same time that we are marking awareness of gun violence, we are also marking the passing of someone who's been been lost. On another, also somewhat sad note, tomorrow is the funeral and service for Beatrice Asaya, who a couple of weeks ago, we lost as a neighbor and community activist to COVID. And if anyone is interested, there is a Zoom arrangement. You can just get ahold of me, and I'll, I'll put the link out to you. There, there are neighbors organizing a campaign to raise money for the family. It is not available yet, but just, just so you know. And on a much more positive note, I was able to go over to the roadside attraction on Saturday, the, the music at Central and Carol, that will be every Saturday during the summer, from 4:00 to 5:00, socially distant for bikers and walkers. It was, it was a pleasure, and everybody was very respectful and followed precautions. It was a great day, and it was great music. This week is going to be a jazz quartet in the driveway. It is also streamed live for anyone who wants to listen and get a little bit of a lift on a Saturday afternoon. So that's it for me, thank you.
Sorry, I was muted. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. First, you know, I want to thank everybody that helped organize the the discussion on Monday. I appreciate Eric Bond and Tacoma Radio. You know, I am hosting an event with my cohort. On Black Lives Member, Black Lives Matter tomorrow with one of my cohort members. It's really reassuring that, you know, these people are going to be the future leaders of the world, and they're really interested in how they can help and take this moment and turn it into a movement. So that was, you know, really, really, really something that touched me. I would like to thank Small Things Matters. They continue to step up in Ward 5. They delivered almost 4,000 pounds of food to Essex House. They are bringing on more buildings in the ward online, helping people more and more each week. So I really appreciate Roxanne and her team. Just, they have just been excellent. And, you know, I just urge my colleagues to continue to think about how you can do better as a community, as municipality during these, these times, because, like I said Monday, I've been on the council since Eric Gardner, and it continues to happen. And if we do not act in a bold manner, it will be part of us for many, many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Kostic.
Thank you. I just want to pick up where a couple of my colleagues were mentioning as well. I really appreciate the moment of silence we had earlier tonight, and the many actions that have been taking place throughout the city and our region in, in support of the movement in response to George Floyd's death, and the many other deaths of Black Americans at the hands of police. And I have been very happy to see many residents in Tacoma Park taking part in many of the, the events that Councilmember Dibala referenced, in a number of other vigils and other marches and protests. I've seen a lot of signs posted around the city, which has been great. I have seen, and I saw the really moving and powerful program on Monday night. I really want to thank Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Circe for their speeches during the program, and all the, all the people who spoke. If you have not had a chance to watch or listen to it, I really encourage you to do so. It was a really powerful program, and I think should be mandatory listening for people in Tacoma Park. We discussed previously, very briefly, and maybe the city manager is going to mention again, and there have been several statements on it, but I was really disgusted and concerned to see the video of the Tacoma Park officer removing the signs, and his attitude being very dismissive and not supportive of the Black Lives Matter movement. And I appreciate the actions, the very quick actions of the city manager and the police chief to address that, as well as the mayor. I, I think it's clear that we have a lot of work to do nationally, but we also have a lot of work to do here in Tacoma Park. And I'm committed to doing that, and I look forward to continuing our work and pursuing new work to address the racial inequities that exist here and throughout the country. On another note, I just want to let people know that we are organizing a BF Gilbert Neighborhood Association meeting next Thursday at 7:00 PM. So please join us. We'll be sending out information. It will be virtual, obviously. And we'll be just talking, kind of general updates, a chance to connect, since it's been a while since the neighborhood has had an association meeting, and there's a lot going on. So I look forward to seeing people at that meeting. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Circe.
Great, thank you very much. Can you hear me? Good, all right. Good evening, everyone. First, I want to echo my appreciation to Eric Bond and all of the organizers, and all of my co-panelists on Monday. It really was a truly moving experience, and quite, you know, to some degree therapeutic, because once you get over the anger, and you get over the frustration, and you get over the sadness, it, it makes you realize that it is now about not just you, but everyone doing the work. I appreciate that folks are considering this a movement, but sometimes movements stop to move. And what I would prefer for us to start thinking about this is a change in the way of life, a change in the way in which we live permanently. The civil rights movement just got us a little step further. What we really should try to do is change how we live, change how we think. And it requires each and every one of us to do our part. It is no longer okay to be silent, because silence equals complacency. It basically equals agreement. So if you do not believe or think in the way in which white supremacists believe and think, then it's your duty to speak to the contrary. And so I am really grateful, as was previously mentioned, that the mayor, city manager, police chief moved so quickly in terms of the Black Lives Matter signs and, and dealing with the officer. But I sincerely hope that this is, is, again, personnel matters aside, but I do hope that this is used as a teaching moment for our officers, and more explicitly, the hope is that there is some level of reprimand, such that it, an example is set, that this is not tolerated, this behavior is not tolerated in the city of Tacoma Park, and everyone in the city should be treated by our officers with a level of respect and dignity. And so, you know, that's how I feel about that. And, and my sincere hope, and I look forward to continuing to have conversations with the community, and with the police chief and others about things that can and will be done to ensure that that happens. Onto a little bit of a lighter note, on, gosh, it was Saturday. I had an opportunity to deliver some little goodie bags to the graduates, high school graduates at Hampshire Towers. And so I had a chance to chat with a few of the young men that are graduating. I've seen lots of pictures on Facebook with people with their gift bags. So I just want to say, I am so excited and proud of the class of 2020. You all have overcome some things that are just unfathomable for me. I just remember getting ready to graduate and just being, you know, all about going to school, going to prom, that kind of thing. And here they are, worrying about, you know, racism and dealing with the pandemic, and still excited and eager to enter into the next phase of their lives. So for those of you who have graduates, I want to do this again, to kind of deliver some gift bags to additional graduates. So please, 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 just let me know if you have a graduate. I am on the verge of just going around and dropping off gift bags to places that I see have the little yard sign. So that might be another approach. Put your yard sign out, and you may get a little special goodie bag somewhere. But, but if you do have a graduate, and you don't have a sign, just let me know, because it was actually quite nice to be able to do something for the students. Quick announcement, the Crossroads Farmers Market is still going on and going strong, and we have a new executive director. So just want to welcome Lauren Goldberg. She is the new executive director for the Crossroads Food Network. So excited and looking forward to working with Lauren. Also, the Hillwood Manor Playground renovation, our first meeting is officially scheduled for June the 23rd. It's a Tuesday at 7:00 PM. It will be online. They're going to use Microsoft Teams. I sent out the link to the webpage. We have a webpage, y'all. That means this is really happening. So please, please, please check out the web, the webpage that will kind of outline some of the, the next steps in terms of the redesign, and also will provide you with the necessary links and call-in information for the median, meeting on the 23rd. And then, lastly, I want to echo my colleagues in saying a special thanks to Small Things Matter and Advanced Community Services. Both groups have been delivering food throughout Ward 6 over the past couple of weeks, and I just can't express enough how appreciative I am for the work that, that these organizations are doing, and how much I've heard from our residents that they are appreciative of the work. So definitely special thanks to those organizations, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you. I wanted to join with my colleagues in decrying the abhorrent murder of Mr. Floyd, and of course, so many other similar examples of police killing of African-American people in the country. And of course, there's way more to it than just that. But as a couple of my colleagues said, even though it's national in scope and long years in, in the making, it, it does affect us here locally also. And I'm very appreciative of the, my colleagues, Tlisha and Jared participated in the recent radio show, and I know Kate helped organize all of that, and there were some very powerful statements there. And sadly, we had the incident in our own community with, with the Flyers, and while that was obviously not what we wanted to see, I'm pleased that the mayor and the chief of police and the chief of police did respond quickly and the city manager also in suspending the flyer ordinance. And I'm not sure everybody knows, but the chief and the mayor made themselves available yesterday in the afternoon at the gazebo, and I think there was a crowd of about, I'd say 25 people or so gathered there. Everybody was masked and distanced and was filmed by a number of outlets, including City TV, and I think that should be on TV now, but if it isn't already or available on City TV. And I have to say, I thought the mayor did a great job and the chief was very good, in my opinion, about not backing away from or making excuses about it, but admitting that they need to do better, even though my personal view is he's done an excellent job since he's been here. But, you know, things happen, and when something like this happens, you have to take responsibility. And I think that he did, and I think that was that was very important. And one of the things that both the mayor and the chief talked about at this event was that we have to do what we can here locally, but that there are other levels of this that are important also. And they talked about working to get the, some changes made in the implementation that's needed for the law enforcement officers' Bill of Rights that's hampering us from taking some of the steps we'd like to take here locally. And I think it's at all levels. I mean, if you look at nationally what's happening, we can see at a time when we, more than anything, need to make progress. We have an administration that's sending us in the wrong direction, so certainly voting and speaking out on that is vital. And I mentioned, I mentioned the state work as well, but we have work to do here locally. And I would encourage, the chief mentioned it yesterday, the mediation idea, which I don't think we have to wait for the state law and to move forward on that and just, I think, to recommit ourselves to the work that we started, but there's always more to be done on racial equity. And I think also, as Talisha said, or at least suggested, there's a very personal component to this, too. And so it's not all of us, not just to talk about passing laws or making statements or protesting, all of those things are an important part of it, but it's how each of us acts individually that in some ways is probably the most important piece of it. So it's something I'm certainly going to be thinking more about and encourage everybody else to as well. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I just want to add my thanks to everyone who was able to participate on Monday night for the program, in particular, my colleagues, as I mentioned before, and also to Brandy Brooks, Chris Barkley, Denise Jones, and two of the young women from the Essex House Girls Club. Cedric Boatman was also able to join us and Megan Murphy as well. And it was, it was, it really was a great program, and I highly recommend everybody go back and listen to it. And I really want to thank Eric Bond for all the technical assistance in pulling together a radio program like that with such short notice. People have talked about the incident with our police officer and a young woman in our community the other night. The materials, the statements that we've made are online. And I want to thank our city manager for quickly responding and suspending the sign ordinance and our police chief. As has been mentioned, we are all, I think Councilwoman Kostic used the word disgusted before, definitely very, it's just unacceptable behavior, and we have pledged to do better. And so I'm thankful that we were able to respond quickly and have a number of residents come out and discuss this with us and the young woman who was at the, who had asked the officer the questions was also available to come and speak yesterday. So there's a lot of work to be done. This afternoon, I listened to President Obama speak before our meeting tonight, and he has asked mayors and county executives across the country to take a pledge regarding policing in our communities. So I have signed that pledge. I have already reached out to our police chief. The pledge asks that we review our use of force policy, which is actually something the police chief was already undertaking here in the city. And so I'm looking forward to learning more from him about what he's reviewing and looking at how we can do that together as a council and our police department and also as a whole community. Another thing on signs is that it came to my attention over the weekend, a really long weekend. The, we have in our community signs from the 1980s from mostly neighborhood watch programs that went on there. Unfortunately, the signs are just awful. If you stop and actually read them and asking that police be called on suspicious people and that we're watching in our community. And so I'm thankful to the residents who have brought these to my attention. Again, I just want to thank the city manager, who on a Sunday afternoon, when I raised this with her, was immediately said, yes, let's, let's address the situation, let's get a list together and get out there and have those signs taken down. So we're putting together a list to make it easier to find the signs. So if you see one of these signs, there are the blue and white signs, please send me the location and we will work to have them taken down. And again, I thank the residents who have raised this issue with me. I want to also let folks know that our housing department is, with the Renters Alliance, is putting on a webinar on June 4th at 7:00 PM regarding the air conditioning law that went into effect in the county. This requires that air conditioning, air conditioners be turned on as of, I believe it is June 1st in the county. And I just want to shout out to Grace Wiggins in our housing department for putting this together and all the work that she's been doing, the webinar she's been holding, the one-on-one assistance she's been doing to residents. And next week, we'll get to hear that. Oh, and I just realized, I never did the agenda looking forward. Check out the website because I completely forgot to do that tonight since we did our roll call early. And I will say, next week's meeting, June 10th, is a not-missed meeting for members of the public. We are opportunity to hear from particularly our Economic Development Manager, Samira Coot Gaines, as well as Grace Wiggins in the Housing Department about the work that they have been doing during COVID-19 and looking forward on what work needs to be done. So sorry that I forgot to look at the agenda moving forward, but again, check out the website for that. And with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you very much. I have a number of items. There I put out my city manager comments, but I left off two, and I want to highlight them. One, and they're both kind of a little bit not completely finalized. There was some references earlier in the meeting about the farmer's market on Laurel Avenue, that they're no longer able to use the space that they've been using, and they'd like to return to Laurel Avenue. Staff has reviewed it. They believe that it will meet the COVID-19 space requirements. I think it, I'm going to say yes, but I was going to look at it one more time, but I think you'll be getting notices out that this weekend's farmer's market will be back in its original location, but arranged differently to ensure public health protocols are kept. The other thing is on this, I love the fact that Councilwoman Cersei is cheering on our high school graduates. There's been a request to have some community-wide car parade kind of thing for high school graduates on the afternoon of June 13th, tentatively between 3:00 and 4:30. And staff has come up with a route that kind of winds through the city. This would be something that does not, it's going to have largely Blair students, but anybody can be in it if you're from another high school. We want to celebrate you as well. So anybody who's lives in Tacoma Park with a high school grad or somehow associated or wants to be associated with Tacoma Park can do this drive-it-yourself route. We'll put out the specifications. We are working with some parent groups on the arrangements related to it. It's, everybody has to adhere to the traffic requirement, traffic stops, and, you know, there's no, it's not going to be like a funeral procession that goes through stop signs and whatever, but it will be an opportunity to, for a set period of time, cheer on the high school grads and put signs out and really, you know, do it up a little bit because they're not getting much in terms of celebration. Although, if Councilwoman Cersei's got those goodie bags, that's, that's pretty special. So we'll get out more information on that. We're confirming with a little bit of the logistics with the parent groups, but we want the council members to be able to share the information with residents, too. It will be a festive item, event, but it may also cause some traffic issues, and so we're trying to minimize that. Now to a serious note, and this regards the sign incident and the, all of the different recent activities surrounding the murder of George Floyd and other victims of violence by police. As the nation reels from continued incidents of black people being killed by police officers, a number of actions, reactions, and issues arose in Tacoma Park. Chief Dival issued a statement on the murder of George Floyd. A virtual event, as been talked about, was proposed by members of the community and in conjunction with city officials, was hosted by Tacoma Radio on Monday evening. Early Tuesday morning, a Tacoma Park police officer was sent to the Tacoma Junction area to remove some signs that a caller had concerns about. He was videoed by the person who had posted the signs and had an interaction with her that was dismissive and not acceptable. Upon learning of the interaction, the police chief put out a statement about the incident, and I issued an order suspending the city's prohibition on posting signs. The mayor also issued a statement on the sign incident, expressing her disgust. The mayor and police chief then had a public discussion with residents at the Old Tacoma Gazebo, which was filmed by City TV. I want to acknowledge how very painful and infuriating this time is for black people. I'm very sorry that any city police officer would make the situation worse in Tacoma Park. That is not indicative of policing in general in Tacoma Park. It is not acceptable. The chief and I are working to address this particular situation and also reinforcing the training and education of our officers that is needed to do real community policing and support here in Tacoma Park. I welcome comments and recommendations. I pledge that I and my staff will do better to work against racism. In my city manager comments, I have links to a number of the various items that have been mentioned here. There's a statement by Chief Dival on the murder of George Floyd. There is the recording of the Hour of Reflection and Call to Action event that was hosted by Tacoma Radio. There's the statement of Chief Dival on the incident of the officer removing the sign. There's the statement of Mayor Stewart on the same. And then there's the video of the gathering at, with Mayor Stewart and Chief Dival at the Tacoma Old Town Gazebo. I urge folks to read these, watch them, share them. They're very important. And I know I was, I was very moved and impressed by the Monday program. And I have really had important conversations with people that I value. So I, I appreciate all of that. I want to mention just-
Can I ask a question real quick? What, what was the language that was considered offensive?
So the, there was, we heard from a couple people apparently that, that there was, that the wording on his sign seemed to potentially incite violence. And so one of the things that the chief has said is that he wanted to look at the wording of the sign and see what that was. What I want to speak for a moment, and I appreciate you asking the question, because I wanted to speak for a moment about what sign laws do and don't do and what my suspension does and doesn't do. The first thing is that, and this was raised by a citizen this evening in public comment, we have, we have rules in the city that prohibit the posting of signs in city right-of-way, unless they're like traffic signs or that kind of. We cannot regulate content. So months and months ago, when a neighborhood service team member pulled down one sign but left a different sign up, that was, that was inappropriate and it was, it was wrong. It violated what he was supposed to do. Similarly, this officer, if he were upholding the rules, he would take down all the signs if he were called to do that. In fact, he just took down the ones that had certain language in but left other Black Lives Matter signs up. Nevertheless, both of those things would be against the city regulations. We cannot monitor content. So if somebody puts up hate, signs of hate, or other kinds of offensive signs, under these provisions, I can't choose to take some down and leave others. So I do want to, you know, caution the idea that this is just a situation that continues indefinitely. I am working with our city attorney about even the language that the sign prohibition uses, and I do urge the council to come back to the topic in general in an updating of sign ordinance. And so I just want to say, I, you know, this, this is a specific time when signs are really needed. This is a time when we can't easily and safely gather together. So if we need to share this really tough emotions and thoughts and calls to action, signs are appropriate, so put the signs up. I just do want to indicate that we do need to think about it and go forward carefully. Back to the other point, we as a city government are working really hard to work against racism, to promote race equity. It is not a perfect directory, and we have to keep improving. And so I, I want your help, and I'm going to keep working very hard on that. I appreciate how many of my staff have, have contacted me and want us all to do better. And I want to say that for many of our staff, this whole time, obviously, is very hard as it is for many of our residents. On a different note, it was mentioned a little bit earlier about the, the webinar about the county's new air conditioning law. So information about the Housing Division and Montgomery County Renters Alliance hosting the webinar to discuss the county's new air conditioning law tomorrow at 7:00. Tom Hucker will be a featured panelist. And this is also the time, this week, this one week, is an opportunity to apply to Montgomery County's COVID-19 Rental Assistance Program. This is the last three days. There's information on the Housing Opportunities Commission website, and we have information on our website. On a really positive note, City TV won a huge award for overall excellence. And they, they won the 2020 Hometown Media Award from the Alliance for Community Media Foundation. It was a program established to honor and promote community media and local cable programs that are distributed on public educational and governmental access cable television channels. They won the category Overall Excellence in Government Programming awarded to overall production of the channel. And there's a quote in the news release on it from Alvaro Calabia that this is the best award we could win. So we're really happy about it, but you cannot believe it until you go to the link and watch the YouTube segment of their submission. It tells you about Tacoma Park. It is absolutely terrific. And they found out about three weeks ago or a month ago and couldn't tell anybody and were just dying. It's so nice that it's officially the news that they, they won- It's so nice that it's officially the news that they, they won this. There's over a thousand entries for this. It's a big deal in this, in this area. And so I'm just really happy for them. You all know how hard they work for us. You know how hard they worked to put these evening council meetings on. They assisted with Tacoma Radio. They're always there for us. And so congratulations to the, to Alvaro, Bian, John and the whole crew. It's really, it's really well deserved. That's it.
All right. Great. Thank you. All right. Let's move on to our work sessions. We have two work sessions tonight. The first is the committee appointment process discussion and then a discussion of the emergency ordinance. I think this first one, I'm turning it over to
I think I'm going to start it and then turn it over to Ms. Grisby.
Awesome.
Because I haven't been talking. Okay. So what we have before you is a follow-up discussion of the board commission and committee appointment process. There's been a group of council members and staff that, that have been trying to look at ways to improve the effectiveness of our boards, commissions, committees, help them where we can, standardize them where we can. Quite a lot of work has already been done. Currently, the city has 16 standing committees and it has some short-term committees. Totalling about 140 members of, of our residents sitting on our, our boards and commissions. And in spring of last year, so about a year ago, this working group began to examine the range of committee structures and functions, trying to find ways to improve functioning and engagement as well as attract new members. The, the working group involved Mayor Stewart, Councilmember Tavala, myself, Public Works Director Daryl Braithwaite, Sustainable Sustainability Manager Gina Mathias, Recreation Director Greg Clark, Community Development Manager Roz Grisby and City Clerk Jesse Carpenter. The, the group issued a survey to former and current committee members, got an enormous amount of information, really valuable information. Some of that has come back to the council. And so in the package, there's a whole list of the preliminary recommendations. The, I think part of this is that we're, so we, we've been wanting to go through this process and update the committee process so that it works better. And then we hit the pandemic. And so one of the other issues here is how do we function with the boards and commissions and make these changes or not? Given that we're in a virtual environment. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Roz Grisby, who's got a little PowerPoint presentation who can kind of walk through the items that the working group came up with.
Yes, thank you. And Ms. Carpenter, do you have the PowerPoint?
I, I do. I'm pulling it up right now. I'm sharing my screen.
Yeah. So just a reminder to all that the last time we discussed this with council, we left with areas for future discussion and consideration. And so this shows as a, do I have control over this?
I do. I'm afraid you'll have to cue me through it.
All right. Do you want to make it full screen? There we go. Okay. So we talked about things we wanted to work on further and come back to council. And the areas we identified in particular were council role and oversight, recruitment, appointments and diversity, and then committee operations. And what working groups discussed is that all of these things are connected, that the key issues identified by the working group and by the council are are the questions of leadership, purpose, diversity and operations. So the survey, the feedback from the survey has been incorporated in the materials you've been given tonight. One of the things that was highlighted is that with this interconnectedness of the role of council, the role of committees and the role of staff, it all, the, the second slide is fine. Thank you. It, it all feeds together with the kinds of nuts and bolts questions, standardization, orientation and training, and how that feeds into recruiting. And so I'm just going to walk quickly through some of the work that the working group has done to, to clarify that. Next slide, please. The, as the city manager mentioned, the the size of the committees, the purpose, the council appointment of them raise it to a level of looking at committees as a part of the city organization and warranting a comprehensive review of how they function and how they might be improved. And yeah, so the purpose slide. Just to clarify rules and kind of reviewing and recommitting, I think, to the, the individual committees. So clearly it's council priorities. Council appoints the committees. The periodic review is warranted both for council and committees so that they know that what they're doing is serving its purpose as originally intended or as it's evolved. Is it the right structure to use? Should it be a standing committee or a short-term task force? The council has done a few of those lately and want feedback on that. Periodic review would be all, all involved parties in looking at, is it still relevant? Does the community still think it's important? Because that's a huge part of recruitment as well. And the questions of staff capacity are addressed in various different ways, but it links through to some of the support and background work. It can look different on different committees and some of the ways to streamline that and clarify that. Next slide, please. The work of the committee also highlighted the ways that all kinds of aspects of how committees function feed into diversity. And that we know the committees don't generally reflect the diversity of the community as they stand now. And some of the feedback we got through the surveys and through conversations have highlighted pieces that we are proposing, looking at further and having council and the committees explore. The relevancy issue really gets at the why bother? We're asking people to, to commit their time and energy and talents. We need to make sure that the committees are, are the right place to do it and the right topics to do it on. We need to look at who we're talking to in our recruitment and selection. And by streamlining some of that, we can get the right, the, the people's gifts and talents linked up with the committees where they're best able to, to feed into that and participate usefully. We also need to have regular deadlines and, and processes and applications and descriptions of characteristics we're looking for so that there's clarity and people can see where they can plug in. The questions about what are the barriers to participation and what kinds of services are needed for people to engage? And we got great feedback on the survey, everything from some accessibility questions to childcare issues to timing, lots of, lots of information that fed through to the recommendations. And the functionality issue is really, does the, does the committee, do the committees operate well and smoothly? Do they have a quorum? Do they use people's time well? Does it, does it make sense for people to engage? And is the satisfaction gained from contributing to the community in this format? Next slide, please. This is really about the nuts and bolts of how committees operate, that there are lots of moving parts of what we ask of committee members and committee chairs. What we ask of staff and how to make this run more smoothly. And as you can see, we've, we've named ideas here that the working group thinks are, are doable and that we can see how to head in the right direction. We look at the, the council role, staff time, committee members' time, even community time. And, and many of the committees are already structured in ways that that the, some of the recommendations we're making and for some committees, it'll be a, a larger step to move in that direction. Next slide, please. Just to highlight how the review process has and will continue to work. It started, of course, with council by identifying this as a priority. It kicked over to the working group that then did the survey and that went through the committees and gave great feedback that went back to the working group again for draft recommendations. So it circles through each moving part as the gears are meant to depict. Interacts with each other. And so the, the broad direction we're headed is to look at the draft recommendations through the committees, the working group, the council and come back with feedback and next steps. Next slide. So the next, there, there's an immediate ask for tonight, and that is that there are the, the next step, as the city manager mentioned, would have been to have staff meeting with committees and, and getting, exploring draft recommendations and getting feedback and working through the details of how that impacts with, with each different committee. We still expect that to be the next step, but obviously it's been delayed. So what you have before you tonight is a consideration of extending expiring committee terms now so that the council and committees can continue to work through the, the proposals. And then within the next, probably less than a year, that, that the committees would have feedback back to council and then council would make the final determinations of how they wanted to move forward on this, what kinds of recommendations you want to enact. And if needed, any code changes that would come from that. So tonight is really looking at an interim step of making sure that committees have enough members in place now to continue their work while these bigger conversations are working through both committee and council. And the last slide, but last slide is just back to the beginning, trying to show the integration how all of these things feed back together.
Thank you. So I think that there's some interest in hearing from council about these, but, but one of the key points is that the working group recommended that the council delay making new appointments to committees until June 2021 unless it's needed to keep the committee functioning. If current members are willing to continue, expiring terms should be extended until June 30th, 2021, unless the member is term limited. Part of the problem under the pandemic is how do you, how do we attract? And how do we function with the committees? How do we do training and get the feedback from them? So the recommendation, and perhaps Mayor Stewart or Ms. Tavala can speak to this. We're trying to find a way to effectively continue the committees while we're evaluating this functioning and getting feedbacks from the committees and during a pandemic. So Mayor Stewart, you want to jump in on that one?
May I jump in on one thing? Quickly, this is, this is Jessie. So what, one of the things, one of the reasons we asked for this work session is, and I think it wasn't quite clear enough, I don't know if it was clear enough in the presentation, but to not only extend current terms if, if members are willing to continue for the next year, but also to to put a halt to filling vacancies on committees unless it's absolutely necessary. And the reason for that is to give an opportunity for one of the recommendations to be more fully developed, but the idea is to have all committee terms and at the same time and not accept applications sporadically throughout the year, but rather give people, have people know when it's time to apply so that there would be a pool of applicants each time rather than picking the one applicant and appointing them and then picking another applicant and appointing them. So this would really give the council an opportunity to fully recruit members and, and have a pool of applicants from which to choose from. So rather than the sporadic appointment. So that is another piece of this that we had hoped the council would look at.
I think another thing that the working group talked about too, one of the recommendations is what's an appropriate size of the committees? We have some committees that have a lot of, that are set to have quite a few members and that isn't necessarily a workable set number, but until we go through this process to identify what's the appropriate number, trying not to fill committee that may have 14, you know, have five vacancies out of 14 or something while we're still trying to identify what's the right size of a committee so that it functions best.
Great. Thank you very much for that. And thank you very much, Roz Grisby, for the presentation tonight. And we just wanted to bring this back to council because it's been a while since we've talked about this. We're not expecting to have, you know, deep discussion of all these changes. These are, there are a number of things. But wanted to update the council on where the committee was going before. And as we go to talk to members of our committees to get their feedback before this does come back to council. So if there are some key things that people would like to ask questions about or discuss, we can do that this evening. But the thing that's most important for us to provide feedback on is the extension of terms to June of 2021. Councilwoman DeVal, you have your hand up? You're on mute, I think.
Try that again. Okay. I just wanted to amplify a little bit. So again, the interim actions are to go back to the committees with these recommendations. And to, in order to have the time to do that, to extend current appointments and freeze any new appointments except when a committee is, is dramatically under their current number, a functional number of, of people. And the reason for that, coming back to what we were discussing earlier. One reason for that is that the group feels very strongly that we want to have committee membership that reflects the, the, the full range of people who live in our community. And so we need to look at people over, we need to recruit, we need to develop folks, we need to provide incentives, we need to put all that in place. And if we continue to fill piecemeal, the spaces that are available, we won't be able to make that work. So that it's not just the extension, it's also the, the temporary hold on filling positions one at a time as they trickle through. Just wanted to make that connection to what we were talking about earlier in terms of racial and other types of equity in our community.
Councilmember Smith?
Ms. Grisby, thank you for the presentation. I'm glad that we're talking about this again. Can you remind us the demographic data on the survey of the committee members? I, I forgot because it was a long time ago that we initially talked about this. And have you guys like radically thought about what is a committee? I mean, you know, it's defined either in the charter or, or resolution that comes out from the council, but since we are, and even how a committee meets, and since we are using you know, Zoom and, and other video interaction products to, to meet as a council and even senior staff are, are using these products. Would it be something to consider in the future? Once we can, you know, have gatherings of people in person, but those people that just cannot, you know, for whatever reason, kids at home, they're taking care of family members, but they are the demographic, the sweet spot that we would love. that we would like to participate in our committees. Have we thought about, does it make sense to incorporate that, to codify that in what, how a committee operates if people can use Zoom or another video product to meet with the community, committee as a whole?
Yes, we, we have thought about it. And your packet includes draft recommendations. I didn't want to get into too much detail tonight, but one of the lessons learned certainly during these difficult times is that committees can function and are now meeting using Zoom tools or other video conferencing tools. And so I think that may be one of those ongoing supports that we offer for committees. It also enables us to record and post meetings if, so people who can't attend, other community members and committee members can catch up on what happened. So yeah, I think there's definitely opportunities for that. The, you had asked, you'd started your question about the demographics from the survey. So I just wanted to say the, the summation of the survey was presented to council in January, and it's in the council packet on the city website from that January meeting. I can disseminate the link tomorrow. Do you want to go back and look again?
I can just jump in really quickly because I looked it up earlier. And I may be off by a couple of percentages, but something like 75% of the committee members are single-family residents, something like 88, 9% own a home. A significant portion are white, not people of color. It doesn't, it, it skews older residents. It doesn't reflect, in many ways, the diverse education income, doesn't reflect in many ways the range of people who live here. And, and in my view, should be represented on committees if, if we can make it work. And just to, again, to touch on some of the questions you raised about, is it possible to, to do these things? Yeah, I think that's what we, we need to get the re, get the feedback from the committees on what is going to make it work for people who can't participate now. I feel a little bit like when we talked about the council compensation, those other factors that were not monetary. How do you get people to participate who have some barriers? It, it's a similar conversation that we, that we need to pursue here.
Thank you, Councilmember DeBala. I, I really just wanted to make sure that, you know, my question was on the record for the meeting so that people that are watching the meeting and people want to come back to watch the meeting, they may not go and look at our council packet, but they can see what we discussed. Thank you.
It looks like Councilmember Kostic was next to speak.
Okay. Yes, you're unmuted me. All right. Thank you. Yeah, I'll go ahead. Thank you very much for this presentation and for all the work that the subgroup has been doing and looking into this really important issue. I think it's, it's something that we need to make a change to. We've been talking about, since I became a member of the council, we've been talking about how we need to make changes to the committees. And I'm really glad to see that we're making progress on that and that there's a specific plan in place. My initial reaction to postponing new members was sort of, why would we do that? Why would we want to delay? We want more people on committees, not less. But I do think in terms of your explanation of why that's being done, it makes a lot of sense. I do think it's going to be hard to recruit people right now in a way that's really meaningful and is going to reach enough people. I also really, really like the idea of us considering applicants at one time, and maybe, maybe it's not just once a year, maybe it's twice a year or something like that, so it's more frequent. But one of the issues we have regularly is that we have an applicant who's a good applicant. They seem fine. We're happy to appoint them, but they may not actually meet our goals in terms of ensuring diverse representation on the committee. And we just have no idea who else is going to apply or if we're going to get any other application. And then we're forced with this choice of, do we leave a vacancy for someone who may not apply? And we may not be able to recruit, or do we appoint this person? And so I think that will help address that issue. And in terms of other things, I, I was thinking a little along the lines of what Councilmember Smith brought up earlier in terms of what, what is a committee? And maybe we need to think through a little more what, what committees look like and, and are there, would it be more attractive to people to have more short-term committees or very directed committees that are working on specific outputs? Because I do think sometimes that can attract people who aren't able to commit or, or feel they're not able to commit, maybe not understanding what the commitment will be to a longer-term committee, or, or might just not be as motivated to because they don't really see a direct output and an outcome from what they're doing on a committee. So I'd be interested in exploring that a little bit. And I know we're, we're regulated by the open meeting requirements, which puts some restrictions on what committees can do. But I mean, I do think as much as possible, if we could have meetings in other places, if we could do meetings in different ways, if we could encourage small groups, just things that might be different than a traditional committee sitting in the, the, the council or the, the community center, having a formal meeting. I know we've talked about food before, you know, just creating a culture of welcome and an exciting place to go. I noticed a lot of the, the or a number of the references in some of the information reference getting committee input and input from current and former committee members, which I think is really important. But I also want to make sure that we're looking beyond that also, because I think we're, we'll get more information and more input from people who don't currently join committees. It'll be a different sort of information, and I think we'll get different input from, from people in terms of why they're not or, or why they haven't ever considered it before. And then I, I'd also just like to see us look a little bit more into maybe connecting with other existing community organizations like the PTAs, the tenant associations, neighborhood associations, things like that, that might be places where people are already active, but they're not necessarily connected or thinking about joining city committees. And that might be a nice way to feed people in. So thank you again for looking into this, and I'm really looking forward to next steps on it. Sorry, actually, since there's a pause, I will take a minute to, to ask my other follow-up question. I, with the, the postponement of, of new members and extending the term to next June, if I'm remembering correctly, will that be an issue in terms of staggering people's terms? So that we'll have, will we end up having a bunch of people finishing their terms right at the same time?
Well, that's something we can deal with as we do the reorganization. This, the, the staggered, the all at once, as we regroup with each committee, the, the terms would change at that point. But this, at least it gets us through the next, gets us through the next year without that problem.
Anything else, Councilwoman Kostic?
Thank you.
Thanks. I'll say, sorry, my, for some reason, my speaker was going in and out, so I didn't get to hear everything you said, but I'll go back and watch. And I just say that I agree with you in terms of, and what Councilmember Smith said about understanding like, what do we mean by committee? And I agree with you on, on thinking of more short-term ones and with very specific tasks or goals. I think we've been really successful in the last couple of years with like the legal services review committee or a compensation one. It seems, but yeah, people get really into it and dig in and do get to enjoy it. So I, I'd like to explore that as well. Let's see, Councilmember Kovar has his hand up.
Thank you. Just a few things. I think I'm okay with waiting until next June, if, if we have to because of the virus. Maybe we can see how things are going at the end of the year and decide whether we have to wait that long. One question I did have though, or just one comment, people don't have to answer now. I think Councilmember Kostic mentioned maybe doing it twice a year. I'm a little worried about having all the appointments just once a year, partly because, you know, then we have vacancies when people step down at random times, and there could be long waits. And I also think if we had to consider 140 people or whatever it is, or maybe the terms would be staggered, so maybe it'll only be a third of that, but still 50, 60 people in one fell swoop, it could be helpful in getting more, a more diverse group. But it could also be hard for us to really consider that many people at the same time. So just something I can, I'd point out on that. In terms of the number, the ideal size of the committee, it seemed a little small to me, just because I think it's hard to get everybody to show up every time. And if the average was supposed to be nine or, or whatever it was, and you needed four or five people to show up, it might be hard to get that. So my reaction was maybe that number seemed a little low. I, I was just curious. I didn't see it mentioned if it was, if it would still be okay, or would it be okay to serve on more than one committee? And I think our regular reporting to council, I think it was mentioned in there, but maybe not emphasized that much. I think that's been one of the drawbacks that a few committees have had is not having the regular reporting to, to the council just for them to let us know what they're doing. Obviously, the diversity thing is huge, and there's some good suggestions in the material on that, but I think we just need to brainstorm more and some other ways of, of getting to that. So those are the thoughts I have. Thanks.
If I could just answer the, some of the questions you've raised, Councilmember Kovar. The advantage of doing appointments once a year or perhaps twice a year is that staff would very much like to do a general orientation for committee members, for new members. We can talk, we, there are many topics we need to talk about and, and but things like the open meeting laws and a code of ethics and, you know, what a quorum is and what it means. What we've found for larger committees is they actually have a harder time getting a quorum because there are a lot of people, and so they, folks assume that out of all those members, they'll be enough, and they don't feel the specific pressure to show up themselves each time necessarily. And smaller committees tend to have more relationships among themselves, and it's kind of a better roll up your sleeves and jump in and get the work done. And, and they do tend to show up more for a quorum. But I think that the other piece of that orientation is training for a chair, committee chairs. And we'd like to get more systematic about, in some ways, formalizing meetings a little bit more to make sure they're running smoothly and on time and have an agenda and, and giving chairs some of the skills that they might need for handling conflict in a meeting or for possible conflicts of interest among members or some of those things. And so by, by doing it once a year or twice a year, it enables that to happen more systematically, and it is more, a more efficient use of staff time. The other advantage that I, we expect, but obviously we'll need to try it to see, is the possibility of synergies among committee members who would meet each other at, I mean, among members of different communities who would overlap at trainings. And so to have committee chairs meet other committee chairs and be able to build on, on overlapping issues and work together, and to have committee members from safe roadways interact with parking, and you know, some of those things that I think don't happen much, or don't happen as often, because they really don't have a lot of common ground where they interact together. And I think there may seem to be some benefits from that.
Yeah. Oh, I think you convinced me about the, the quorum and the size of the committees. I still think maybe twice a year rather than once a year might, might be better. But I, but I appreciate the information. Thanks.
Great. And I think also one of the things, and again, I'm sorry if someone said this when I couldn't hear before, but I'm thinking about having two or three council members kind of form this subcommittee and really taking on the responsibility of thinking through like recruitment or other things for the committees. I know each of us try and think about this, but there, unless it's like a committee that, you know, either we have a relationship with already, or we're thinking about a lot. We have a lot of committees. Maybe we'll end up with fewer. But having that task, I think, will be really important to have, you know, a, a handful of our city council members really thinking about the makeups of the, the committees, thinking about who, working with the chairs, about recruitment and other things, and then bringing that back to the, the full council as well. So really wanting to think about reforming that process. So I'm not seeing any other hands from what, on my sense, from the conversation is that it sounds like there is general okayness with extending the, the terms to June of 2021, if we can get this work done a little faster. Maybe we can, we can revisit that. And I know the city clerk was working with our city attorney in figuring out how we can actually do that. Is that correct? And we may not know yet.
Yes, I, we don't quite know yet, but he believes that to, to do this, perhaps he could speak for himself if he wants to. I believe he's here, but we might, it might require a minor code amendment if we would like to do it, some sort of minor code amendment that would enable us to extend the terms and hold off and, and put more or less a freeze on new appointments unless absolutely needed. So we would come back to you with something in the near future, I would hope. But perhaps the city attorney has something to say on it.
No, I don't have anything to add other than that's exactly what we discussed and, and it is 100% correct.
Great. All right, then we'll move forward with that. And the committee will continue with its work, reaching out to our committee members to get feedback. If members of the council have an opportunity to review again the PowerPoint that it's going to be presented and the document that accompanied it with more details and have any other feedback, please provide them to us as we continue this work. So wonderful. Thank you so much. The next thing we have up is now a work session to review and talk about the, the emergency ordinance that was put in place on March 11th, 2020. This was, we did this to confirm the city manager's authority to take all appropriate and reasonable actions necessary to prevent and/or reduce the impact of the outbreak of COVID-19 on the efficient operation of the city government in order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of its residents. So since it's been in place for a couple of months now, the city manager has taken a, a couple, a few actions. All of these are put up on the city website, so we, and the city council has been informed of all of them as we have outlined in the ordinance that was passed. I don't know if the city manager wanted to say, speak first or turn it over to the city attorney or?
I can, I can speak for just a moment. The, the emergency ordinance has been very helpful on, on some things that weren't predicted. And I guess that's the reason we put it in place. There have been a, a number of actions that needed to be taken in a really short period of time that would not have had an opportunity to bring to council. There have been a couple that even with the council meetings running very well virtually, there have been a couple other actions that have either been taken that needed, that needed to turn around very quickly or almost did. And one of those was when the, when Montgomery, when the state of Maryland went to phase one reopening, but the two counties, Montgomery County and Prince George's County and several others, didn't take that action at the same time. Because they didn't actually, they started out by not voting on it correctly at the two counties. And it could have been a situation where I would have had to take action to protect our businesses and our, our population at the last minute. And it was very fortunate that, I think it was like four o'clock on, on the afternoon, when the, when the, many municipal attorneys were contacting the county attorneys in Prince George's County and Montgomery County and, and allowed them to go back and redo what they had done so that So that it actually affected municipalities and, and covered us. The area where I think, while right now I really appreciate that the council meets virtually and well and we have a lot of conversation back and forth in between times, the area that I am concerned about going forward is how reopening happens and how does, how am I going to adapt some things in the city building as reopening occurs? It's sometimes in short notice or just kind of some surprises that may come up to, to protect safety. And while it certainly can be done without this emergency ordinance, it might be slower and it might be a little more difficult. There's a little bit of discussion even about the emergency sign, the action I took to, to relieve the, the sign ordinance, the sign prohibition, which although I'm able to do some actions on my own with signs, this really was done because of the pandemic and it was a systemic, across-the-board action that, you know, fortunately, we didn't have to wait till tonight for you to change the ordinance on the signs when we were really in a difficult situation. That said, this is a discussion for council to determine how you want to go forward, when you want this to come to an end. The, the language of the ordinance, I think, is up to 30 days after the end of a, of the emergency declaration. I always have to double check. It was 90 days or I'm open to the way the council wishes to proceed on this. And I really have appreciated that there's been a lot of back and forth between myself and the council as we've been going through this difficult time. And happy to address any questions you might have about it, but I'm trying to be as, as open as possible and post information as soon as possible. I've not posted the information about the sign change on the city website yet. We're trying to get some language about that and we'll do so very shortly.
Great. Thank you. I don't know if the city attorney wants to speak to this or your experience is working and what you're hearing regarding other municipalities in the area and the actions they're taking.
Yes, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I, the emergency ordinance, as Ms. Ledlow indicated, the chief advantage of it under these circumstances is that it provides unnecessary flexibility in a very unpredictable set of circumstances. Obviously, like a lot of other things in this situation that are new, there are, the, the efficiency and flexibility is the advantage, a disadvantage is because it's new, we've had to learn how to deal with the process a little bit and I think that's improved. But I, globally speaking, the legal concern that I have and I've seen discussed in other contexts is obviously the unpredictability of the future and the potential for going in and out of the situation that we're starting to come out of as we go forward through the summer and into the fall and winter. And are we going to be in a situation where, as we start to go through the various phases that the governor has laid out, our area is going to start to get put in reverse back through the phases? And how do we respond to that and adjust? And I, you know, and that, that is clearly a decision for the, the council and the elected officials about how to approach that. But the flexibility that is provided by the ordinance can be used or not used if it's there. And we have no way of predicting what the future holds.
Great. Thank you very much. I see some hands up. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you for having this discussion. I had a couple of questions. One, what phase in the reopening would the clock start on the emergency powers that were given to you, Suzy, or Ms. Ledlow? That would make it so that the resolution would automatically sunset? That's my first question. Second question is if we didn't have social distancing and these issues came up, how would council deal with them? I mean, what, what the difference in how, I mean, yes, we're meeting remotely via Zoom, but you could always, as long as a quorum is present, you know, you can conduct, as I understand it, city business.
Right. So there's two things. First is I want to, I want to make a correction. I said the wrong thing about when this, when this ordinance expires. It's at the day that the governor declares that the state of emergency has ended. So that's, I don't know at what point he declares that. And the next, or the 90 days, whichever is later. So this would end on the date that the governor declares the emergency is ended. And so that's something that we would have to, you know, it doesn't, it's not clear when he may call that. And, and that's also what the state of emergency is, also has to do with how he has access to funds. So I don't know where he's going to call it as the, that's the state of the emergency ends. A couple of the issues about, you know, if, if, about the social distancing. Right now, social distancing is important. I don't see an easy way, for example, to go back to the council chambers and maintain social distancing and be able to, you know, just kind of admit some members of the public and have to not have everybody attend or, or how that would work. So that would be something we'd need to work out. As in terms of, one of the other concerns, obviously, is if a number of council members get sick. And then another issue is if there's a problem with the virtual network. The internet could, could get overloaded in a storm or power could go out. What do we do, you know, if we have one of these situations? And I, you know, I follow the information down in Florida where, you know, they look at hurricanes at the same time as beginning with a pandemic. So those are the various kinds of situations. For the most of the time, I don't think we will have that as an issue. I think, you know, when it's possible that we can come through council, that's the way to do it. And that's how this ordinance is written, is that it's, it's only when it's really not the, the right way to handle it because of that particular emergency that I just take it, that I am able to take an action. And I've been consulting with you in advance and, and writing it up at the end. So it's, again, it's a discussion for you, but it really has to do with what the gov, when the governor ends the state of emergency or whenever you wish to end this, which you have the option, according to this ordinance, to end at any time.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Seaman?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, personally, I think things have gone pretty well considering the craziness that we've been through in the last few months. I think, you know, putting this emergency powers in that, when we did, made sense at the time and I think that it has worked well. Ms. Ledlow has informed us when she has done things. And I could foresee that, that there, there could be circumstances where crazy things happen. But that's been true before this whole pandemic thing. You know, we could have had a bad tornado come through and cause problems and, and there are powers in place to take care of that should that happen. I appreciate the, the work staff did in, in addressing, you know, how does, how does staff work with the, the changes in the environment that we've had recently? And on how can the, as we have, and I think it's worked pretty efficiently with the help of staff and, and the technical work that we need to get that, make that happen. But all I considered, I think the, the panic is over and I think we've got pretty good processes in place at this point. And I don't, I don't really see the need to extend the. Council could be contacted. We have various ways of doing that. And I think it's time to kind of pull back some and, and get back to more normal business, even though it's doing it a different way than we have in the past. I think, you know, we need to do our job and, and, and let Ms. Ledlow do her job. So I, I would say that we just let this resolution wind down to its, to its end and, and we go back to the normal process.
I agree, Terry.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Yeah, my, my thought is that there's also a pretty good argument for the concept that some of the people in the community have suggested, most probably, I think Jessica Lamon, that we amend it to say that it only applies if we really can't meet. And so I think as, as the, my two colleagues who spoke earlier pointed out, you know, this could happen anytime and we have the ability to, to, in the sense that an emergency could come up under normal times and we, and we somehow find a way to deal with it. If we're saying, oh, that there's a great deal of uncertainty because of COVID-19, why not just amend it to say, amend it to say that if the council can't meet, and that's if we can't do what we're doing tonight, either because, you know, the internet didn't work or because we all got sick or there's a sudden new wave, then the, the powers would be available, but as long as we can do what we're doing tonight, we don't need to, but we have it as an insurance policy. So I appreciate what my two colleagues are, are saying, but I wonder whether as an alternative, we could amend, amend it as I've just described. And in that way, we have the emergency powers out there as a backup, but we would be unlikely, they would be unlikely to be used at all unless, as I say, something really bad happens.
Yeah, thank you. Before I move on to Councilman DiBala, I just, I wanted to see if the city attorney had any thoughts on if we wanted to amend it as Councilmember Kovar suggested.
Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to think about it a little bit more. But, but one of the concerns that immediately jumped to mind is, is how would we define or be able to predict can't meet? And, and, you know, so i- is it on the scheduled meetings or is it the ability to get the council together that night when something happens? What, what would that look like?
But isn't that always, isn't that always true even if there was no COVID-19?
Yes, that is true, but, but I'm not sure that the, I, I suppose there could be a scenario in which an urgent situation would arise under those circumstances, under normal circumstances.
Well, take, take, for example, I'm sorry to interrupt, but take for example the, what happened with the, with the flyers. So if we weren't in the middle of the situation and, you know, maybe we benefited from having the emergency powers in this case because we were able to move quickly on that. But let's say the same situation happened with the removal of the flyers and none of what we're going through now in terms of the coronavirus was even taking place. Well, we'd either wait until Wednesday night and pass it or we find some way to consult with all of us and, and get it done. We do one, we do one of the two things and that's been true for however many decades and that'll be true again onto the future. So it doesn't seem any worse than what otherwise is, has been our existence here in the city and will be in the future.
I will say that the provisions for emergency meetings are, you know, and, and how to notice those or whatever, you know, are not that easy. That's why you've not done it very often.
Right, but we've, we've survived with it though, right?
I will, I will say that there have been some times when we've had to take other actions and a, and had to get the attorneys involved in it. And it's, it can be a little difficult, not saying it can't happen, but it also, I, this is, the attorney will need to identify the kinds of provisions. I mean, some things are true emergencies and other things are just, you would like to act quickly. And so I think that might be one of the issues.
Okay. Councilman DiBala?
Yeah, um, I, I think I'm looking at this a little differently and maybe I'm, maybe I'm not getting something here. But I thought that the emergency operations, the emergency ordinance was more about moving quickly with respect to city operations, with respect to protecting our city staff, with respect to the safety and health of our residents. And, and while I'm glad that we are gradually reopening, I, I don't, I, I think that creates more opportunities for needing to move quickly with respect to that subset of protecting staff, protecting health of residents and safety, continuing city operations. And, and so I'm, I'm not thinking we should, I, I think we should leave this in place because for those purposes, we still have, we still have an emergency. There's a county emergency, there's a state emergency. Or as I know, there's no talk of changing those anytime soon. And so I'm, I don't, not to take away anything from the city council, but I guess I wasn't looking at it as about the city council so much as I was looking at it as keeping city operations running in an emergency, which as far as I can tell, we still are under. So I think the flexibility is important and, and I think we should keep it, keep it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kostic?
Thank you. Um, I have to say, I'm, I'm really conflicted on this because I, I see the, the reason for the original impetus for us to implement this and I think it made a lot of sense. I'm very glad that we did it. And I do think we are in another moment of change, just in this very moment with us, with things starting to open up. And I do think there's, there's more uncertainty now than there was a week or two ago. A week or two, a week or two ago, I would have been pretty strongly feeling that we needed to remove the emergency powers. Now I, I do feel a little more conflicted on that. In my opinion, most of the actions that you've taken, Ms. Ledlow, have, have made sense and have been good actions and have been things that have been required, given the emergency situation. And I don't, I don't have a problem with, with how those things have been handled and I very much appreciate how you have consulted with us when possible and worked to be very transparent about how those things have taken place and why. I do think at the same time that we, we obviously have this system in place as a system of checks and balances. And just, you know, in a, in a theoretical, you know, philosophical way, I, I think that makes a lot of sense. And, and I think that the system was devised so that we had seven people making, making these decisions and we had an opportunity for public input and we had an opportunity for making sure that we were considering all different opinions and options. And I want to make sure that we're retaining that because I think that's really, really essential to our functioning democracy in Tacoma Park and throughout the country. I, I mean, that's something that, we don't have a great functioning democracy on the national level right now and, and I want to make sure we don't, we don't have that here. And I, I obviously, it is not comparable in any way because I, I trust you, Suzy, and I, I don't, I don't feel that you're taking these actions in a way that are not in the best interests, interests of Tacoma Park. in a way that are not in the best interests of Tacoma Park. One of my questions was specifically with regard to the signs regulation, the order that you put in place, which I think was 100% appropriate and I very much appreciated you were able to do quickly. I was looking back briefly at some of our previous discussions on signs and I was trying to figure out whether or not you had that authority without the emergency action or not. And so that was one question I had. My other question is, I am interested in exploring this idea that Councilmember Kovar brought up with regard to amending the order because I do think the point of this resolution is that we were concerned about being able to meet. And if we cannot meet, then we need to be able to take important actions to protect the city and protect staff. And we are meeting and we are consulting. And I know you have consulted with us whenever possible, even with some of these other actions. But I do think that might be a useful way to sort of remedy and balance these two different competing forces. So I would be really interested in exploring that option. And then I'm also curious whether there is any flexibility or capacity in amending our, the timeframe in which we need to notice public meetings in case of an emergency. I don't know if there is any flexibility in terms of that that might allow us as a council to meet to achieve a quick decision on an emergency action that might allow us as the council to do it instead of necessarily delegating that to the city manager.
On that last point, that would take some legal time, I think, with our city attorney. But there is a lot that is not well-written about the emergency provisions. And that's part of the reason this ordinance came about because when we, we're kind of designed for storms and purchases. That's kind of where the emergency provisions come into play in the charter and in the code. And that's not useful for now. And so I think, given this greater knowledge about the kinds of, kind of the roles that we play, the kind of emergency issues that we're being faced with, you know, I do think it makes sense to look a little bit more at a larger scale about how emergency information is included. And of course, the code and the charter were not written when you could do virtual meetings. And so how do we identify that? I think it should be updated. And so there may be some small thing that could be dealt with, which would be good. But I also think probably a little bit more, a little longer look makes a lot of sense for this provisions.
And I would be interested too in just better understanding, not right now, but before making any kind of decision on the emergency order, I'd be interested in understanding better our specific regulations with regard to the amount of time we need to notice a meeting and those sorts of things. And I can look that up for myself, but if someone has a quick cheat sheet, that would be awesome. And then my other question is, I can't recall how we wrote the order. Is, if you are not yourself able to act, Suzy, you are able to delegate to someone else? Is that correct? And to who?
I am, and we go to the deputy city manager.
Okay.
Or if I identified somebody else. For example, it may very well go to the police chief, depending on the kind of issue.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mccaskey.
Hello. All right, great. Thank you so much for all of this information. And like my colleague, Councilmember McCaughlin, I am torn as well. And in one regard, it's really clear to me that, you know, we've had the capacity to meet. And because we've had the capacity to meet, it does to some degree appear that, you know, this emergency order is not necessary because we are able to meet. But one of the things that I am starting to think about are things like recess. Right? So COVID doesn't stop because we're on recess. Now, I would assume that if needed, we could not be on recess for the month of August. And I guess plan to meet regularly. But that keeps us hanging me up now. Because I started this conversation being like, no, we should totally get rid of it. We can let it go. We'll be fine. And then I thought about the calendar and I said, oh, well, we're technically not supposed to be in session during the month of August. That's not going to stop COVID. How are we going to make these decisions? So I wonder about, you know, the council calendar and whether, depending on the approach that we decide to take, we might, I guess, have to make changes to our own work calendar, for lack of better words. So if, as a council, we were to decide to not have the city manager have this, you know, emergency authority, then we may have to just agree to be in session for the entire time that the pandemic is happening in order to ensure that we're available to make those timely decisions. I do like the point that Councilmember Kovar brought up about, you know, if the council is unable to meet provision, but I do recognize the legalities of the if. Like the if may not be you don't want to because you would prefer to have the month of August off. Like you have, you're physically able, you have the technology that enables you to meet, which means you probably should. So I know I'm not really asking a question because I'm just really conflicted, really trying to think through logistically what makes sense for us. But I would be interested in hearing what the city attorney is ultimately able to piece together. And then, you know, maybe as we start having conversations about the next step, you know, us as a council making that decision or that commitment, should we decide to, you know, let this emergency order that's in place expire and then the council reclaim its position, then that might mean that we need to make some substantial changes to our schedule as a council.
Councilmember Mccaskey, one issue is that it's not too bad right now, but particularly at the beginning time when we went into the, into working remote, the amount of work that goes into preparing an item for council was too much for staff. And so part of, there was, early on, if you look at the list of emergency actions, there was the action on approving the garage door purchases at Public Works. These were things that were already, you know, in the budget and it was an item that had already been prepared. But I had employees who were working almost 20-hour days and the idea that they could have to stop and prepare an agenda item and be prepared to come to a council meeting was really hard for them at that moment. Like I said, right now it's fine. I could see another situation where it comes back on. So I agree that, to the extent that things can come through council meetings, I prefer it. I prefer not to use emergency orders for those kinds of things. But I would like to just note that it's not just your availability during the month of August or whatever, if there's an action. But there's also that there may have to be city TV and the city clerk and some other staff helping put together whatever is needed to have that meeting take place. And so that's just a small part, but people tend to forget that work goes on to get the meeting started. And so I just wanted to make sure that that was part of what happened early on in this process.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember McCaughlin.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly follow up on that point. To me, that's sort of the core of it is I would like for the actions to be taken that are true emergencies, as you said before, not things where we just want to act quickly. And I completely understand that it is a burden on staff. And to me, that's why I guess I was looking more into what can we change with regard to our own council policies? I mean, can we be flexible in terms of not having an agenda item? I mean, I actually think that, having an agenda item but not having agenda materials, I guess, is what I'm saying. I actually think how we handled the emergency resolution this week was pretty good. I mean, we did have a little more lead time than we would on other things, but it came up quickly. But I think we were still able to get feedback from residents and we were able to make changes. And I know it was still something that ended up being pretty step-intensive. I completely understand that. But maybe there are situations where there are things that can come to council with very minimal background and we just have to be willing to say, hey, this is an emergency. We wanted to review it as a council. It's more important to us to review it as a council than to have as much information as we might in a normal time. And so I'd be interested in looking into what changes we could make to that.
Councilmember Kovar.
Yeah, the one other, maybe more expanded way of looking at this question of if the council's unable to meet, it doesn't have to just be the seven of us can't meet. I think as the city manager has just explained, to make a council meeting happen, there are various sort of infrastructure components that have to be available and they have to have staff available to do them. So you have to have city staff and good city TV as well. And you also have to, depending on what the answer to the questions that Casey just answered, you have to be able to have agenda materials written so that the public can understand what they are. And you have to have, you know, the internet working. And so maybe there's a slightly different way of thinking about it and not, so it's not just if the seven city council members themselves can't meet, but if a city council meeting can't happen in a meaningful way because the seven of us or the infrastructure needed to support us since we're, you know, incapable of doing a lot of these things on our own, if those things aren't available, then that would be the situation. So it doesn't have to just be the seven of us. I think I'm repeating myself. But maybe there's just a broader way of thinking about what it means to not be able to meet, which could include some of those things we've mentioned. Yeah, the staff.
And I think the city attorney was saying that as long as that was defined, that'd be useful.
Right. Thanks.
Councilmember Seaman.
Yes, thank you again. Yeah, I think, again, we're talking about emergency things, not the run-of-the-mill, just, oh, I just had an idea. I'd like to throw by the council. And so if we're talking about emergency things, I doubt that we have staff piping up agenda items and paperwork and all that. I think it's a, it's a action that the city manager feels should be taken in the short term, something before a council meeting happens again, whether it's a, we're not going to meet again for a month or whether it's something that's just part of a week before we're going to meet again. And so I think we have to think in terms of what kind of emergency things would happen. And then the other thing I would say is that maybe if we need an ordinance, the ordinance would be to say that the council needs emergency powers so that we can meet and discuss with the city manager via telephone conference call between at least a quorum of the council to help make decisions. So we are participating in that activity and doing it in a, an emergency type of situation. But I'd also like to point out that this incident with the flyer is kind of nice, but had nothing to do with COVID-19. It had, the urgency is something that would have been urgent if it was back in the normal days, you know, back in the old days, we didn't have COVID-19. That, you know, situations came up back then that were kind of emergencies and we always kind of figured out how to take action right away. Either the city manager already had authority to do something or she would contact council members and say, hey, I think I need to take action right away on something. What do you think? And we respond to that. So maybe we don't need an emergency or emergency powers for the council to make a decision because I think in the past we always kind of did those kind of things anyways. So anyways, that's my last word on it. Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to say, and we'll think about the next steps in a moment. I'm probably somewhere in between Councilwoman DiBala and Councilwoman McCaughlin, seriously, and I think where I'm playing, Councilmember Kovar, which are more mixed or torn on keeping the, where we are with the ordinance. And I think the reason I'm leaning more towards where Councilwoman DiBala is is because it still seems like there's a great deal of unknown and uncertainty. And my fear is in a little less than two weeks, given the protests, given everything that's been going on, we could find ourselves back to where we were just a little while ago. And I'm very nervous about that, honestly. And I think that's part of my concern about rescinding the ordinance at this point. Though I, you know, I'd be happy to think about exploring some of the potential amendments or are there other ways that we can clarify when this would go into place? I think it has worked well up to this point. And we are still able to meet at this point. But again, it's still not feeling 100% confident that we're going to be able to do this and we're out of the woods quite yet. So I think there were a number of things, if I could ask the city attorney, points people have brought up about potential other things to explore. Does it seem like there are other things to explore here or not really, I guess?
Well, one, I think it would be a variation on some of the topics that have been mentioned. But, you know, I can envision in a scenario, let's take the August recess because that was an example that was a good example that was brought up. You know, if we have a situation that we have to deal with, maybe we could frame the ordinance in such a way that, or amend it in such a way that there would be an action, city manager would be authorized to act until council is able to meet or be in session. I think the other thing that we need to take into consideration is the idea that emergency meetings by the council, those have to, we can't really adjust the requirements, the notice requirements and everything that goes into that, which are set by state law. So we have to be very, very mindful of that. And that includes the ability to confer outside the bounds of the Open Meetings Act. So those are considerations that occurred to me while we've gone through this discussion. I think there are ways that I can perhaps offer different potential courses of action that would allow a balancing of the concerns that I've heard this evening.
Great. So maybe I'll, let's see, we're in June. It's June 3rd. Maybe as we set the agenda, I'll work with the city attorney and the staff to think about bringing this back to us again in a few weeks to review. Any different situations change? And if we find ourselves not needing it, as we know, we can rescind this at any time. So we can do that. But hearing from my colleagues, unless somebody wants to make a different, Councilmember McCaughlin, raise your hand.
Sorry, I just had a question. In terms of rescinding, what is that action? Is it a, is it a resolution to rescind the order? Or is it a hand vote? Or what does that look like?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. Since this is an ordinance, I would prepare an ordinance indicating that you're rescinding it.
Thank you.
So if everyone is okay with that, we'll bring this back in a couple of weeks and look at potentially amended language or taking a different stance on this and continue to keep our eye on it and working on it. And, and, um, I want to thank the city manager for, um, continuing to keep track and updating the website, um, with the information. Any objections to that direction? Nope, all right. Seeing none, then I think we're done for the evening. Um, we are adjourned. All right. Thank you, everyone. Um, I'll talk to you soon. Have a good evening.